Public comment session is related to agenda items. The second public comment period is for non-agenda-related items. We grabbed the first sheet and I'm sure we'll get the next one that is still being signed up for. So with that, we can start off the curriculum committee.
According to Policy 903, public comment, which is limited to three minutes, should be directed to the presiding officer rather than individual board members, district employees, or members of the public. For confidentiality and privacy rights, specific comments regarding particular individuals must be communicated privately to the school board and superintendent via email at psdschoolboard@penrich.org. All right, so first up is Stacy Smith, and then on deck is Katie Renee.
Hi, Stacy Smith, Percival City Borough. So I'm here in reference to the proposed social studies curriculum changes, hoping that this will be explained better throughout the course of this meeting tonight, but it looks to me like the only required teacher resources are from controversial, highly partisan sources. When the Hillsdale 1776 and 1776 Unites curriculums were first mentioned by board members a while back, it sounded like it was being brought up as something that would be additional resources for teachers, something available to them if they could use in their lessons. I mean, I wasn't happy about that possibility either, but at least it was going to be an optional resource for them and therefore not necessarily forced upon my child. This, however, looks like the teacher's only required resource, at least for third, fourth, fifth, and ninth grade social studies, is Hillsdale and 1776 Unites. Ms. Chaykin once said that the board's end goal is that every single kid who leaves Penridge loves this country, and that's the point of all this. That's crazy to me. This is a public school in America. Educated and experienced teachers should be giving them the tools to decide to love their country, flaws and all. Not that they should love their country, that is indoctrination, and that's what happens in authoritarian countries, teaching them unbiased historical facts and about all of the different kinds of people out there in the world. Well, that's just preparing them, and that's an education they should be receiving in public school. You've also repeatedly said you're only doing what the people elected you to do, and you hired a consultant who says that that's how school boards should be run. But what happens when you lose your majority in November and all of this gets undone? Then what if the majority changes again the following election and the election after that? This is why school boards are meant to be nonpartisan and why candidates can cross-file in primary elections. They are not supposed to be political. We can't keep completely changing everything every couple of years based on whatever political party takes control. What kind of education are we really providing at that point? The ones who will suffer the most are our children. People on our school boards should be making decisions based on what's best for the children and staff with parental and community input, regardless of party affiliation or who happened to show up on Election Day. You ran on parents over politics, but you're running this district entirely based on politics and just ignoring all of the parents who don't agree with you, and I think a lot of people are fed up with it. You're failing our kids, you're failing our teachers, you're failing our community. This district is in complete disarray, and I sincerely hope we get some people on the board in November who will put public education over politics and clean up your mess.
And then on deck is Kevin Foster.
Katie Renee, Percival City Borough. You've seen me and heard me enough to know that I'm a regular at these meetings and I pay attention to what's going on. I also have a master's degree in education. I was a classroom teacher for four years, so I know how to read curriculum. Despite those things, in the three days since the curriculum committee agenda was posted, I have not had sufficient time to review the proposals you've put forward. I can imagine this must also feel overwhelming to our teachers, who you claim to support. What I cannot imagine is how overwhelming this last-minute proposal must feel to a family who hasn't been quite as tuned in but knows something fishy is happening, that doesn't know how to navigate board docs, and that has no experience understanding how to read curriculum. You haven't given the public sufficient time to review these changes, nor have you been fair to teachers to give them time to review and give feedback either. Do I believe that all of what I have just said is completely intentional and part of the playbook for this five-person majority on the board and Jordan Adams? Yes, especially because Jordan said himself, these school boards need to keep moving, and the idea is that the other side, the powers that be, they cannot keep up with all of it. I'd like to tell Mr. Adams, curriculum chair, Blomgren, and the rest of the board, there should be no other side when it comes to our kids and their right to a quality of public education. Mr. Adams has introduced nothing of quality and does not deserve a penny of my hard-earned tax dollars. I found Megan Maynard Clement's campaign speech on YouTube from October 30th, 2019. This was back when she needed us because she was up for reelection. Some takeaways: Megan said, quote, "When I ran for the board four years ago, I ran to solve problems. Four years ago, teachers were frustrated. They felt like they were being duty to death and not being given the time and tools they needed to meet individual needs of students. Parents were frustrated. They felt like education and air conditioning weren't being prioritized over other projects." End quote. Literally all Megan and this board have done is caused problems when there were none and take away time and tools from teachers. We asked for focus on education, and we got an unqualified biased grifter from Michigan. Megan also said, quote, "We have rigorous curriculum development and curriculum mapping that wasn't in place before," end quote. So what changed that made you think that the rigorous curriculum development that you claimed the credit for was no longer satisfactory? Also, Megan, quote, "One of the top two best things we've done is hiring Dr. Bolton. He's been a phenomenal leader. He has the knowledge, experience, talent, and passion to be able to do this job and do it effectively," end quote. So where was the respect for his leadership and experience when he questioned the Vermillion contract? Also, Megan, I'd say that working for my colleagues on the board and in the administration...
We're not supposed to speak directly towards specific...
I'm just quoting her, I'm not talking to her. Thank you. I'd say that working... another quote.
Plus, it does have to still pertain to the agenda items.
I'm talking about her...
But it's not, I'm just saying, it's not...
I'm talking about her comments on curriculum directly.
Let her go.
I'll take my time back then, too, please.
I did start.
Thank you very much. Megan, quote, "I'd say that working with my colleagues on the board and in the administration with all of the other staff across the district at all levels, it's been such a wonderful experience. Everyone is passionate about their jobs and cares about kids, and when we're making decisions, I'd say the most important thing we are looking at is what's best for kids, and it's great to have different people on the board with all different backgrounds and areas of expertise looking at these things from all different angles to make the best decision possible." End quote. Well, now, half the board doesn't get to know what's going on, and they're completely ignored, along with the staff and administration and the public. It's time you all do your job, which is to work for us, your constituents, who have told you loud and clear how we feel about the Vermillion influence on our kids' education.
Stephanie Regina on deck.
Kevin Foster, Hilltown Township. This school board and their allies have officially given the keys of the Penridge School District over to a political operative, Jordan Adams from Vermillion Education. This entire takeover operation is also being completely funded by Penridge tax dollars from all of you. As a reminder, here's how Jordan Adams arrived in Penridge. January through April of this year, Jordan Blomgren held secret meetings with Adams, completely hidden from public view, that were only revealed due to public record requests placed by parents. On Tuesday, April 24th, 25th, excuse me, at 1:42 PM, Jordan Adams sent across a draft contract to a single board member, Mrs. Blomgren. Wednesday, April 26th, 30 hours later, the Penridge School District approved and signed the contract. Jordan Adams is a political hack. He is not a curriculum consultant. Since that time, Adams has been secretly modifying curriculum, hidden from public view, and the Penridge School Board is now poised to insert that curriculum into our children's classrooms during the full board meeting next week, the night of the first day of school. Jordan Adams knows exactly what he's doing. Per quote that was secretly recorded during a speech made at the Moms for Liberty Conference in Philadelphia, quote, "The key here, and I got this idea from a board that was doing this, is that it means admin need to be put on notice that they will need to cooperate with all of this." Additionally, some color on the resignation of Dr. Bolton. June 6th, Penridge class of 2023 graduation, Bolton announces his medical leave. June 21st, full school board meeting, executive session held on administrative matter the same day Bolton announced his leave. So these guys met privately to talk about administrative matter. I'll finish quickly. June 30th, Bolton leaves permanently. Here are my questions for Mrs. Blomgren. In the development of this curriculum, did you threaten any administrators to put in this curriculum per Jordan Adams' recommendations at the Moms for Liberty Conference? Did you push out Dr. Bolton in response to his concerns with the Vermillion contract? Have you agreed to any backroom deals with administrators in order to force these changes into our classrooms? And then to the community, these board members, they don't care what any of us think. They don't care about our children. They only care about fighting a war against our school district, our students, and our staff. If you have not volunteered to get involved, now is the time. There are a few hundred people in this room and watching on YouTube tonight, but over 15,000 people will vote on November 7th. Please, please, sign up to get involved. It is time we, as a community, create a true alliance of Republicans, Democrats, and Independents to end this madness.
When did Kirk? Did you say we're good?
Did you say we're good, Mr. Thomas?
Okay, so Stephanie Regina's up, and then Brendan Kirk is next. And I just, again, obviously you're allowed to speak, but Mr. Foster, comments toward anything within the curriculum, so if there were about that, just...
I'm going to quote the curriculum.
That's good. That's what I want to say. Obviously, you're allowed to speak just in the second comment period, so just make sure it's specific to the agenda items. Thank you.
Is this on still? Can you hear me?
No.
Okay. Stephanie Regina, East Rock Hill. Okay, so I am going to start by just pointing out that I am going to quote the curriculum. And before I do that, I want to point out that it's the curriculum that is being pushed by the person who is calling people like me and everyone else who has spoken or is about to speak a goon. So here I am as a goon, here to point out that not only is the curriculum itself just... The fact that you're raving this through, you just, like, the first day back, that you gave to teachers today, like, they were already stressed. They were here one week ago today to show you how stressed out they are, and then they walked in today to find out that you're suddenly overhauling an entire year's worth of at least one subject. I'm not even clear on how much this touches, which is another problem, the lack of clarity across the board. So how can the teachers be clear? And it hasn't even been voted on yet. The nerve of you to force the teachers to prepare for something that you haven't even legally passed yet? As for the curriculum itself, I would like to point out that some people have said, oh, how is this, how is Hillsdale's curriculum problematic? How does it downplay, you know, the more troubling parts of our history? Okay, well, here's, here's something that if you learn to think critically and think independently, and you learn to understand rhetoric, if you learn that at school, if you're lucky enough to go to a school that allows that, then you'll look at something like this, and you'll see, okay, so this is about Jamestown. It says, "The organizers and settlers of Jamestown embody the enterprising spirit..." I love those terms. "...that would come to define immigrants from England and North America. A particular note was Jamestown's original experiment with a form of communism. This collectivism plus rampant disease helped produce a disastrous first year and a half with the fledgling settlement. It wasn't until John Smith's requirement that settlers earn their bread by their work and his guarantee of private property ownership that, et cetera, et cetera, like saved Jamestown." Okay, so now, I would like to point out, this is for third to fifth grade. They don't know what communism is. You're telling the teachers to take a minute to malign a system that they don't even understand? They're eight years old, first of all. Second of all, it wasn't communism. It was merchants who came over and said, "We own everything. Since you're poor, if you want to be an indentured servant, you can just work your, to the bone for us until, you know, however many years pass, and then you get a little piece of land for yourself." And they did that, and then the collective part was, like, the merchants are supposed to provide them with, like, you know, collective stores, and there wasn't enough for them because they didn't care, because they're a bunch of greedy merchants. And how to wrap this up, I'm going to say that you can do this, please let me finish this thought, you can do this three ways, okay? You can tell the kids, you know, that this was, oh, wonderful spirit, or you can tell them this was evil capitalism, or you can just tell them what happened, and they can decide for themselves.
On deck is Jane Foster.
Brendan Kirk, East Rock Hill Township. So I'd like to read to you from page 32 of the Hillsdale curriculum. Consider how strongly matters religious faith defined colonial culture. From the pilgrims and the Puritans to Roman Catholics and Jews, a wide variety of faiths, most of them Christian, and many of them were intolerant of one another in the Old World, permeated colonial settlements, and their adherents increasingly came to respect one another as neighbors. Establishing this religious freedom and law more was widespread and exceptional. I would like to read for you some of those widespread and exceptional religious tolerance. The Virginia colony, the Church of England, was established as a state religion in 1619. That was not overturned until three years after the War of Independence ended. Massachusetts Bay Colony required every citizen to belong to a church whom they paid taxes to. That meant the freedom of religion was something that not everyone could actually afford, because you could only join the church if you could pay them. Again, in New Jersey and New York, after it was turned over from New Amsterdam, the Duke of York enabled anyone to choose their own church after they had paid their taxes. Connecticut established a, the Congregational Church as their state religion. The Pennsylvania Constitution of 1776, the oath of office, required acknowledging the Old and New Testaments, barring Jews from holding office. The New Jersey Constitution of 1776, quote, "No Protestant inhabitant of this colony shall be denied the enjoyment of any civil right, effectively allowing Catholics to be barred their civil rights." In North Carolina, only Protestants could hold office until 1835, and in fact, in the North Carolina Constitution, Article 6, Section 8, bars "Any person who shall deny the being of Almighty God a religious test that was declared unconstitutional by the U.S. Supreme Court in the good old days of 1961." This is anything but widespread religious tolerance in the colonies. Now, I know everybody loves America, but why do the people who wrote this curriculum, the board that's reviewing it, feel the need to lie about the facts? Are we so ashamed about our history that we can't simply tell what happens, that we have to make up stories that are not supported by the facts? And these are not hard to find, by the way. Most of these documents are on display in American history museums or in the houses of state legislatures across the original 13 colonies. Children should simply be told the facts of the truth, not lied to. We shouldn't have to lie to children to try and convince them that America is great. If we do, and we need this curriculum to do it, then we have a serious problem, and you have a serious problem. Thank you.
Jane Foster is up next, and then Ross McLennan is on deck.
Is it Jane Kramer?
It says Jane Foster. Did somebody miss, right, twice? She's up for first public comment.
It may have been missed, it may have been missed, uh, it's just Jane Kramer.
Okay. Yeah, it's not, I mean, it's very clear there, but, okay.
I was outside, so someone signed me up. I apologize. Wait till she comes back.
She's just getting the rest of the sheets.
That's okay, we can wait.
For public comment.
We'll wait, because this is important.
We'll wait.
Yeah, let's wait.
Fine.
You guys can check your phones now.
Actually, I have Mr. Wurz on the phone, and I'm actually taking care of the time and the three minutes.
You don't have to explain your...
Got it? Got it, under control.
Anybody else on the phone, Dave?
Where's Jordan, by the way? We're begging, where is he? Why is he not here?
Right to answer questions.
Exactly, yeah. This is so important.
All right, did you start the time?
No.
Please start the time. Maybe again, Miss Kramer.
Okay. All right, settle down, I'm gonna start.
Yeah. Almost had it.
Okay. Jane Kramer, a goon from Sellersville. It's, it's really disgusting that this board just fights and pushes their political agenda through the curriculum instead of addressing the real problems in Penridge. Our teachers have no contract. Several schools are without principals, not even acting principals. Teachers are leaving at a higher rate than other districts.
Again, does this have to do with the curriculum?
Do we have any, enough bus drivers?
Or should this be kept for second comment?
It's, it's right here.
But it has to be the curriculum. That has to be saved for the second comment period.
It's about the curriculum.
Which curriculum?
Yeah, you're talking about the...
I'm talking about the Hillsdale College curriculum that you're trying to implement.
That's fine, she can speak in the second comment if these are not related. Could you go to the curriculum piece, please, for now, and save the rest for second comment? You are up for, you signed up for second comment as well, so you can bring those back during that time, please.
Okay. You kind of threw me off there, that wasn't very nice.
Well, you're not abiding by the...
Yes, I was.
Your comments were not...
You know what? Forget it. You like to bully.
I'm honestly just following what the protocol is laid out there. Matt Carver, there, is on deck.
Ross McLennan, Hillsdale. Uh... Hilltown, Hilltown, sorry about that. I want that shirt with the goons. Did you make that shirt?
I made it, yeah.
Can you sell those?
I made a shirt.
Okay, there's nothing to do with curriculum, but it is spelled correctly. "Are we now risking loss of state funding because of our new curriculum's use of non-Pennsylvania certified curriculum advisors? As a taxpayer, that worries me, aside from the costs involved. I am against the use of Hillsdale 1776 curriculum. All news media reports this curriculum as biased and political. Recently, what they've done is they've simply left stuff out in an attempt to shape a vision of patriotism," said James Grossman, executive director of the American Historical Association. "What they also are trying to do is replace an approach to teaching that teaches students how to think with an approach that teaches the students what to think." Right, very good. I think it was illustrated earlier, and I, no, I'm not gonna say that. "There is no place in a public school for right-wing Christian indoctrination of students. This is grooming, and it is disgusting."
That's right.
The other cheaper. "Transparency between parents and school is of most importance. I understand that we discussed before that anything that is not curriculum in school, parents have the option to opt their child out. However, there's no policy that allows parents to opt out their child out of anything curriculum-related. I know the advice was to discuss with a teacher and principal on anything that parents would have concerns on. I just ask that a policy be created or amended so that parents have the option for their child to do an...
I just realized...
I can finish. I know. It's good, I mean, I love this. "Alternate assignment if the assignment goes against their family's values and their beliefs." Now, I didn't write that. This was a public comment on August 2nd, 2021, by Jordan Blomgren. So the problem I have with opting out is that if it's curriculum that the state requires, but not this curriculum, you can opt out of Hillsdale. Thank you.
On deck is Jean Pritz.
Good evening, Matt Carpenter, proud, deplorable, lifeless vessel, Percival City Borough. First and foremost, I hope everyone has had a safe and relaxing summer with their family. Hardly a school year begins in a week. Anyway, my public comment pertains to the Vermillion contract that has been passed and is in the process of being implemented this school year. I'll be honest, I initially had limited knowledge of what was in the contract. This contract was and how it would benefit Penridge as a whole. However, after doing my own research, I am glad that the Vermillion contract has been approved. Yes, it's on a 180 since the June meeting. I really appreciate the people who run for public office and feel their...
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes, what's up?
I would just ask the same thing, if it's not too specific to the curriculum and if it's on the contract, could you wait until the second comment?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
On deck then, so Jean Pritz is up next, and then having a hard time, Joanne or John?
King.
Thank you, King. On deck.
Jean Pritz, Hilltown Township. Former employee, parent of two, graduates from 2006 and 2010. One of the resources that the Hillsdale 1776 curriculum is based on is The Land of Hope by Wilford McKay. In reading the teacher's guide, I was struck by, struck first and foremost by the definition of the word "history" found on page 14. "History is what the present finds useful to remember about the past. The questions I have is who is determining what is useful to remember and useful for whom? History, according to Merriam-Webster, is a chronological record of the significant events, often including an explanation of their causes. By the very premise of their definition, the 1776 curriculum seeks to present history as a mere shell of the vast volume of events that shaped our world, and especially our country, in a biased and exclusionary way. In The Land of Hope on page 45, objective questions and thoughts of slavery for the teacher to present to their children, or their students, I found this particularly repulsive. Question is posed, and I quote, "How did slavery in the southern states compare with the situation in Latin America? Answer: Latin American society was more accepting of non-whites, but working conditions were dreadful. Death rates were high, and the slave force needed constant replenishment. In contrast, Virginia ended slavery in 1778, and conditions were healthy enough, healthy enough, that the population of slaves increased naturally. In fact, slaves in the antebellum South would have the highest rate of natural increase of any slave society in history." All quoted. The audacity of the statements like this are at the very root of this curriculum. Did they just compare the slave force to a soda in a vending machine in need of replenishment? Were conditions of slavery healthy enough? How in any way could the life of a slave be healthy enough? In what way? The reality that the slaves were brutally raped, forced into breeding programs, and treated inhumanely doesn't even enter into the narrative of natural population increase. So I ask the school board members, who is making the determination of what is useful and of useful to whom? We teach our children to learn from their mistakes. Our history is fraught with mistakes, injustices, and evil. We cannot, as a community, ignore the reality of the past or omit some of this ugliness just so we feel better. We have to learn from it so we can truly move forward, depriving our students of the ability to comprehend the truth and only hindering them when they move into the world beyond school. It isn't, shouldn't, and can't be the curriculum the Penridge School District adopts to instruct our children."
So I'm just gonna say it on deck real quick. Mark Eddinger on deck.
Good evening. John King, Hilltown. In the Marines, they taught us that propaganda is a mixture of truths, half-truths, and outright lies, all mixed together so you can't tell what is the real truth. As evidenced this evening through several of the selections, the Hillsdale curriculum meets that definition of propaganda. Please, for the love of all that's holy, do not subject our kids to this propaganda. Thank you.
And then on deck is Leah Rash.
Hey guys, I'm actually Mark Ettinger, I'm from Hilltown. I'm a third-generation taxpayer, I'm a '90 graduate of Pen Ridge. My kids have threaded the needle here to avoid the damage that's potentially going to go on. My daughter was a graduate last year and my son is a senior this year. But as a taxpayer, I just wanted to come up and talk about the current state of things with the curriculum. You've basically taken an open and honest and collaborative process and you've turned it on its head. The shifting of the sands of what are the expectations with this person? First, he's just providing some recommendations and now tonight we're full circle to where full swaths of our curriculum has his imprint all over it. So, I just really feel like you gotta be a little bit more transparent with the situation. With regard to that, you've been given every opportunity to lower the temperature, many turns at that, and every time you guys have basically done the opposite. So, finally, really, there was some banter back and forth about the side of the curriculum issue at the end of the last meeting that I watched. I'm only on the side of the kids, the administrators and the staff. And in order to move us forward as a society, we're not in the 50s anymore, there has to be, you know, evolution of our curriculum. Acceptualism and just patriotism alone will not get us to a point where we can move forward and be more inclusive with people that are out there. Focusing solely on exceptionalism is flawed. So I really implore, let's look for a middle ground. I'm all about compromise, I'm all about teamwork. And I think everybody needs to be on this board and whatnot. There's too many sides, there's too, it's too divisive, folks. Like, I never thought I would come up and speak at a board meeting. I don't want to do that. I want to sit in my house, I talk enough during the day. And like, it's just enough is enough. Like, I, you can say and come back and say, look, we were voted in, so this is what we're going to do. I respect that, but like, respect us, okay? Thank you.
On deck, Stephen Rash.
Leah Rash, Hilltown Township. I want to talk about transparency around this too. It would have been very helpful to see the curriculum, what was removed and what's been added. Like, it's been a lot of time comparing it to what I could find that was already out there. Jordan Adams wrote this curriculum, don't even try and pretend he didn't, he 100% wrote this. But out of all the Hillsdale lessons that I went through, which are nauseating, the one that struck me the most is section 8.1 of the ninth grade curriculum around civil rights. Which is, I can't believe you're asking our teachers to teach us. One of the statements is, "To clarify with students how the civil rights movement largely focused on the government's resolve and ability, based on the principle of equality, to enforce equal treatment as opposed to the creation of equity, that is, to enforcing an equal results, an equality of results and outcomes." So, there's one thing that the wildly torpedoed community committee did was trying to find equity. That's not even the definition of equity and that you have it in there is alarming. It's equality of opportunity, not equality of outcomes. This has been like your guys' song, you defined it that way. It's not the definition. Community committee actually worked that out, aside from your equity in your house. But I'd also like to remind you of a book by Martin Luther King, because they talk about the Eye of a Dream speech and the letter from the jail. But he also wrote once, "Where do we go from here? Chaos or community?" You should all read it. King predicted that white resistance to racial equality would stiffen when the agenda moved on to far costlier measures such as improvements in jobs, schools and housing. The practical costs of change for the nation up to this point has been cheap. The limited reforms have been obtained at bargain rates. There are no expenses and no taxes are required for Negroes to share lunch counters, libraries, parks, hotels or other facilities with whites. The real cost lies ahead. The stiffening of white resistance is a recognition of that. The eradication of slums housing millions is complex far beyond integrating buses and lunch counters. Then he goes on to talk about data around infant mortality, higher percentage of black Americans dying in Vietnam, school funding, college attendance. This is all equity. And so you're going to have our teachers stand in front of our students and say the civil rights movements did not support equity? You're going to say that to the black children in this community? Are you kidding me? And by the way, infant mortality is still highest in the black community, by far, in America. So here's an opportunity for our children to have facts and why don't we work together with them and say, how do you guys think you can help with this? How do you think that you guys, this generation, can change this? Instead, we're just ignoring it.
On deck, Amelia Foster.
Stephen Rash, Hilltown. I had a lot of good notes, but I don't even know where to begin anymore. Local Board Procedure 005. If you go under Organization, under Consultants, the last line, I quote, says "The use of consultants from outside the district who promote a particular commercial product is discouraged." Now, I know that there's some wiggle room there, but all of our policies that you've all created have so much wiggle room, so why aren't you following this one? So, the question that I have, no offense, are you getting kickbacks from Jordan Adams when you bring in his, for his curriculum? Jordan Adams curriculum. Are you getting a kickback from that?
It's not, it's not in there. It's not the agenda item.
Jordan Adams? Progress reports on Jordan Adams?
Right, it's not, it's still not, you're talking about the contract.
All right, I'll move on then. All right, I would like an answer to that question now. So, in Jordan Adams' letter that's on the progress report, at the bottom of the social status section, and I quote, it says "The avoidance of any resource or content that included partisan activism, religious advocacy, sexually explicit content violates policy 109, 119, 321, age appropriateness and anything of potential concern as the district grows in becoming more trauma-informed." So I do have the question. Are we omitting the 60s and 70s in Vietnam? Are we omitting the Revolutionary War? And are we omitting the First Amendment in our teaching of our students with this? Because those are all a direct violation of what he states. So that's my question on that. You know, I work in an industry that brings people in from all different communities. And if I grew up in this curriculum and was taught the things that I would be taught with what Mr. Adams wants to teach us with Hillsdale, I would get fired on the first day if I brought up any of these things. Not only is it morally corrupt and rude and wrong, but it's illegal. Human resources would have my head in a heartbeat. You want to teach these kids and go out in the real world? This is not real world here. Not. So I have a question for a couple of you up there that are educators, public educators. How can you hate public education if you're actually employed by a public school? How do you hate it? That's my questions, thanks.
Laura Foster, on deck.
Camille Foster, Shortley, East Rock Hill. I graduated from Pen Ridge last year and I'm going to take this time for any of you to answer the questions that were posed by anybody this evening.
No, you know, it's your comment period, it's for you to speak.
Okay, I can like say a word, like I relate, 30 seconds if you want.
It's your time, I think that was-
Okay, still waiting.
This isn't for question and answer, but-
About the curriculum, all the questions are asked about the curriculum. Yeah, any, you can answer any of them.
This isn't a question and answer period.
Oh, okay, I'll just wait then. Curriculum.
On deck though, Laura Foster, you're on deck if you want to come down.
Curriculum.
Do you have any other questions you would like me to ask?
Ask the questions that I have too. Yeah, yeah, I mean, I just would restate everything that everybody else said already. So yeah, I mean, I hope you guys can remember them. It's a coordinate, so you can like go back to.
On deck is David O'Donnell.
Okay, this is public comment, this is for the public to comment. That's the title, public comment. My question and answer, I know, but I hear you, so I, please, Ms. Foster.
Laura Foster, East Rock Hill. I'd like to welcome you all to Pennsylvania's first Hillsdale Charter School. Let me retake my time since I don't think that that was recorded. Laura Foster, East Rock Hill. Welcome to Pennsylvania's first Hillsdale Charter School. Thank you, thank you. Megan, get the police on speed dial because I'm about to spread some truths. There is no other explanation for what you're about to see tonight besides this board clearly trying to indoctrinate our children with their alt-right fundamentalist beliefs. Everyone up here, maybe not Ron, everyone up here wants what is going to happen tonight. They may play like they are aghast or I don't know, I don't want to indoctrinate the children. But the fact is that the first person to introduce Hillsdale curriculum was Christine Batiky. You know who the second person was? Joan, oh, it wasn't Plomkin, it was Joan. Joan was also the first person to introduce 1776 Unites immediately after saying that school board members don't suggest curriculum. Remember that little exchange, Joan? We don't forget who you are. Not sure that all, who all these alt-right groups were or are? Let me, let me spread some truths here. Here's a little fact check for you.
Laura, this isn't-
In the August progress report, in the August, August-
And if you stay till second, you have to be specific to curriculum.
It is, it is.
What you're talking about and quoting from before, it's not specific to the curriculum agenda tonight.
Yeah, so this is from the August progress report. See a little preamble. Can I have my time back, please? In the August progress report from Jordan Adams, it was reported that Adams was asking, was asked to use the following organizations to build curriculum. One, Core Knowledge. Two, 1776 Unites, Hillsdale Curriculum, Teaching American History and the Bill of Rights Institution. You know what all of these have in common? They're all alt-right conservative Republican organizations, every single one of them. Let's start with Core Knowledge. Core Knowledge Foundation is a right-wing think tank, agnant promoting, this is it, "Memorize all the great things about America-style education." It's led by Ed Hirsch, who has been sharply criticized for being elitist, Eurocentric and focused too heavily on rote memorization. Next, Teaching America. This is from the Ashbrook Center. You guys know who that is? They're a member of the State Policy Network. It's a national web of white-wing think tanks funded by extremists from the Republican Party. Guess who funds Ashbrook? Who's that guess? America, Koch Brothers? Yeah, Koch Brothers, surprise. Our board loves Koch Brothers so much that they're indoctrinating them with the Bill of Rights Institute, which was founded by Charles Koch, surprise. Oh wait, it gets better. Ashbrook's president is David Bobb. Guess where he was a professor at? Hillsdale, ding ding ding, he was a professor at Hillsdale. We all know about Hillsdale 1776. If you don't know, come see me, I will inform you about this alt-right conservative school. But there's another one that's called 1776 Unites and it's a different entity. This is Joan's love child. The message of 1776 Unites is clear. They are whitewashing history and denying systemic racism. This board is not following the Hillsdale playbook. They are the Hillsdale playbook.
Next up, David O'Donnell, and on deck-
See me, if you've had enough of this, or reach out to ridgenetwork.org and we'll help you out.
And then on deck is Phoebe Wilcox. Are you Phoebe? You're on deck, sorry, Phoebe.
David O'Donnell, Sellersville Borough. So, it's hard to follow all those up, but my question's more process-based. How is it that we continue to keep forcing things through, one after another after another, without any of the normal precedents that are set in place? Any of, nothing on this school board has ever taken a single meeting to push through.
O'Donnell, are you getting to the agenda item or should this be saved for the second comment?
I'm talking about the curriculum.
Right, that's not what you're talking about though, you're not talking about the agenda items.
I'm talking about the process of your curriculum right now.
But that's not on the agenda. So if that would remain more to the second comment period-
I'm talking about the actual curriculum right now.
Regina.
All right? But I'll get specifically to it.
Thank you.
There's an essential question, right? Number one, in what ways are human beings equal? Are you out of your mind that you are actually going to try to push this nonsense? We have such atrocities of slavery and indentured servitude and everything. We have the suffrage movement, we still have people that still are not treated equally. You guys can't even hold a proper DEI committee, let alone push through something on the curriculum? On how you're going to all of a sudden talk about human beings being equal and how they are? You are absurd to think that this is going to go through in any way. You think that my child is going to sit there and learn from you on these things. This is not okay on any level, all right? You have to stop this. You're forcing things through without actually paying attention because it's simply what you want. You think this is great, you think this is what is going to make us good. You notice how no other school district is using 1776, right? And yet they are far more successful than us. There's something to that. You're not preparing them for college, you're not preparing them for life, you're not doing anything with this. Hit the pause button. Get an actual consultant that can help us or honestly, do something easier. Pay attention to your actual teachers and administrators that are actually improving us every single year. Not you, then.
On deck is Missy Unicorn.
Hi, my name's Phoebe Wilcox and I live in Bedminster Township. And my two daughters graduated from Pen Ridge a few years ago and I'm really glad that they're not here now. Makes me very sad to see what's going on. I took a look through the Hillsdale curriculum the other day. I don't have a lot of time on my hands, but, and it wasn't numbered, the pages weren't numbered, so it was really hard to find how they were going to be talking about slavery. But I found one person- But I found one person from colonial times, I don't remember his name even, he wasn't one of the biggies. But there was a suggestion for the teachers to, you know, have your students talk about this. And the question was, why did so-and-so think that Negroes should not be considered equal to whites? And just the nature of how that question was posited was offensive. Because shouldn't the question have been, why were our otherwise so, you know, so in many ways genius founding fathers, why were they in the light of race relations so, you know, so impaired, so impaired? And how can we compare what was happening then to what is happening now? Rather than, and to use the word, you know, Negroes popping up, even if you're just quoting how people back then would speak, I found it offensive. I mean, it's informative to read all the old documents, but then you have to overlay what is happening now. You just can't... It was like, I felt, as I was looking at it, I felt like I was in this vacuum, like you were teaching kids from 1700s. But the kids aren't in the 1700s, you know? And what's happening here, whether, you know, I think you're perfectly aware of what's going on, is, well, and you can gloss it over and say, you know, I'm a Christian, I love everyone. But then you put forward a biased, a very biased curriculum that's a way of being exclusive and locking people out, and it's not Christian. Jesus wasn't the truth. Jesus was a rattle.
On deck is Amy Johnson.
Good evening. Missy Kunicorn from Siler Elementary School. I'm the guidance counselor. Just to give some context of what I'm going to say, this goes back a couple of years. And it has to do with, at the time, in August of 2021, the opposition to DEI and culturally responsive curriculum. Back in August of 2021, when the school board and some community members began asking questions like, "Why does Pen Ridge need DEI? What specific problems or challenges is the district trying to address? What data was used to evaluate or substantiate a need?" When I was invited to be a part of the ad hoc committee that was formed by the school board, I was under the impression that we would be able to have intelligent conversation about these questions. This does circle back, this circles back.
Thank you.
I was hoping we could use research, data, and respectful dialogue to work through solutions. I was immediately shocked and disheartened by the circus of opinion and information that was passed along that was based on fear, falsehoods, and rumors. At an August 2nd board meeting in 2021, one of our current board members made the comment that there was a Pride Month activity packet that was provided to students at my school. False, false. There was another claim made. The same board member said we had a mandated celebration for certain values. False. There were many other statements that made me cringe because they were taken out of context. They were not accurate, but at the time, I was afraid to speak up. I was afraid to speak up. But the disrespect, rumor spreading, and now a crazy curriculum blindside, it's gone too far. It was clear from the beginning that there was no solid leadership to help that ad hoc committee towards a healthy and positive resolution. I feel like we're in the same situation. One of the words that kept circling around, meeting after meeting, was data. Where is the data to support DEI? Where is the data that says racism and homophobia exist in our district? Where's the data that shows the harm being done to our students? School board leadership continued to say, "We need to get the data from the administrators." I was wondering the whole time, and you could go back and watch these DEI meetings, and I asked like, "What data? What data are you referring to? I'm so confused." I was perplexed. Why do we need data to support empathy? Why do we need data to learn from our past, to learn from our mistakes, to better understand other people's experiences? One last statement. So much of the fear talk that I hear about American patriotism and what's being indoctrinated to our children, it's not based on data at all. It is one-sided, it comes from belief systems, and public education is not based on belief systems. Thank you.
Bannon, kind of with an R, and it looks like D-E-N-N-A-N. Ross, maybe an R. Ross, something from Hilltown, is on deck after Amy Johnson.
Good evening. Amy Johnson, Hilltown Township, resident. I had two children who graduated from Pen Ridge, went from Pen Ridge Tech program. Yes, I'm sorry, I'm a little soft-spoken for a teacher, I apologize. Okay. Amy Johnson, hi. I'm a teacher and I'm also a community member. I am going to read and continue sort of some of what Missy Kunicorn was just saying. Two years ago, before the start of the school year, and this does pertain to curriculum before you ring your bell. Two years ago, before the start of the school year, at the August 2nd board meeting, Dr. Bolton and later, Dr. Scheid gave an update to the community about the three years of progress that was made to update our curriculum K through 12. How there were so many teachers who gave their time, some even after being exhausted after the demands of COVID. They met with two doctorate-level educators, Dr. Heidi Hayes Jacob and Dr. Penna Calick from the ASCD. That is the Association for Supervision of Curriculum Development. Please look these women up, compare the knowledge and experience and mission for public education to that of Jordan Adams in Vermillion. It's sickening. In short, the ASCD was founded in 1943. It has more than 125,000 members.
I'm sorry, I'm not ringing my bell. Are you bringing it around, what's on the agenda?
Oh, yeah, this is, curriculum.
But if it's specific to this, it's not-
Yes, I'm comparing to what we had, to what we're going to-
No, but you're comparing to Vermillion, Vermillion contract on one there, this is curriculum, so it can be-
This is curriculum.
It can be spoken, just end the second comment period. It has to be specific to the agenda, not just curriculum in general, this-
You know what, I don't want to argue, it takes more time, I'll just wait for this thing to-
Thank you. Okay, so Ross, and again, I apologize, I don't have the last name, it's either R or a B, D, like Brennan, Bannon?
I think there was probably D a second time, but I'll-
No, 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 because I have it as a second time. But for the second comment period, but, so your name is listed twice, this is a different Ross. Dan Shapiro is up next then, and then Robin Levy.
Dan Shapiro, Bedminster Township, I have two kids in the district, one in North and one in Byrd. And like many others tonight, again, just generally opposed to this whole Hillsdale message you guys are putting forward. So, two years ago, we were all here listening as a lot of concerned citizens came up. Some of whom are sitting up there now, others of whom are running to sit up there in a couple months. And they basically torpedoed the curriculum that was put forward that was supposedly tainted with DEI and CRT. So two years later, we have a new curriculum, provided to us by the literally calling himself Fox in the Hen House, Jordan Adams, which was, as far as I could tell, thrown together in a couple months by copying and pasting from Hillsdale. And a couple quotes on that curriculum, which I was looking for. So, a historian at Binghamton had said, "The Hillsdale curriculum is the red MAGA hat in textbook form." A history professor from Princeton said, "It's a political and distorted view of American history. It's history as politics by other means." And the last quote that Ross already said earlier, which resonated with me as well, was the one about how it makes students learn what to think instead of how to think. And that is the greatest disservice that we can do to our students. But the fact is, there is miles between the 1776 curriculum and the 1619 curriculum. And we, the adults in this room, in a purple county, in a purple school district, should be mature enough to understand how to work together and educate our kids in a balanced manner that recognizes that not everyone in this room has the same perspective. So... Recently, there was an article in the Bucks County Herald that included a really relevant quote from Mrs. Cullen, which was, she's noted that it was a tall order for teachers to deliver on a curriculum they'd never seen, which of course we're adopting the day that school begins. So, at an absolute minimum, I am begging this board to at least consider delaying the implementation of the elementary curriculum for enough time for parents to actually review it, comment on it, for our teachers to understand how to teach it, the same request that Jordan made a couple years ago in regard to the other curriculum. We understand you guys kind of backed yourself into a corner with the ninth graders, they need a curriculum, we get that. But there's no reason you need to be rushing a curriculum for our elementary students. In closing, one more quote, this one's from another community member that felt really relevant to the discussion, so... And I quote, "Political interest groups have tried to sneak curriculum and ideologies into schools nationwide that are anything but normal. And please don't be fooled, they're also creeping into Pen Ridge. The thing is, when Jordan wrote those words two years ago, we didn't realize that was just her plan for the future."
Robin Levy up, and then Bethany Schwendy on deck.
Hi, it's Robin Levy from Bedminster. There's so much to say, but I don't even know where to begin. I read a big chunk of the 1776 curriculum. I don't know if all of you have read it. Have you read it? Have you read it? It's really kind of horrifying. Anyway, the one statement that jumped out to me in the introduction was, "History is complete and can't be changed." Really? Like, really? Well, we can't discuss it, we can't understand it, we can't put it in context, we can't... No, we don't want to do any of that. We just want to talk about how fabulous America is, how exceptional we are, and we don't want to talk about anything else. I can't tell you how many times reading through this, it was like, oh, the virtue and the love and the... I mean, it was all mushy, it was disgusting. It wasn't an academic exercise. It was a rah rah rah, go America, we're fabulous and great in every conceivable way, and we're going to downplay everything that's negative. Okay. So getting to the curriculum part before you stop me. Has it gone through or not? Or are we just voting on it next week? Or is it already a done deal? I want to understand that. And if so, what support materials have been ordered or not ordered for our teachers? How are they going to be prepared on day one to present this schlock to our children? And I would like to opt my child out. I don't want my child doing this. I don't. And if you want your kids to learn it, that's great, but I don't. I want them to be prepared for college, I want them to be prepared for a job, I want them to be prepared for life, and I want them to be compassionate and empathetic human beings that look to understand other people that are not exactly the same as them. And this curriculum is not going to help them get there.
Nicole Holtz is on deck.
Hello, Bethany Schwendy, Perksey Borough. I am a parent to three Pen Ridge students as well as a local educator. I wish to address the board regarding the proposed social studies curriculum. The current proposed list single required instructional resources for teachers in places, select lessons from the Hillsdale 1776 curriculum. Use of this as a required resource is unacceptable. Not only has this curriculum been widely discredited by leaders in the field, it was written by a religious institution. How is the required incorporation of Hillsdale's interpretation of content acceptable in a public school setting? From Hillsdale College's own website, the curriculum was developed by Hillsdale College's K through 12 Education Department, professors at the college, and teachers in the Hillsdale affiliated Classical Schools. Please note, Hillsdale College is a small Christian classical liberal arts college in southern Michigan. That's right, classical schools. Hillsdale's classical education model views its approach as the, and I quote, "surest road to school reform and one that emphasizes core subjects like phonics and science and the importance of studying Western history." Our students deserve an education that challenges them to think critically and emboldens them to engage in the world with curiosity, finding value in the perspectives and experiences of many groups and cultures, not just those aligned with Judeo-Christian values. Our students deserve access to a robust curriculum. Curriculum that is researched, written, and reviewed by actual K through 12 educational experts, teachers in public school systems. Our teachers deserve the support and respect from the board to use resources that are vetted by those who are experienced with public education and to design and deliver instruction based on best practice, not on a religious institution's privatized preference. This proposal is a short-sighted Band-Aid on the wound caused by this board's haphazard demotion of the social studies graduation requirements and heinous disregard for the time and expertise district teachers poured into the social studies curriculum writing process before it was terminated without appropriate consideration. There is no place for this curriculum in a setting other than a private school where all parents are willingly subjecting their children to its shortcomings. You ran for your seats on this board under the auspices of parental control and choice. Based on the clear and continuous feedback from the parental community, implementation of this curriculum leaves a significant portion, if not a majority, of district parents behind. No matter how unhappy a special interest group is with conventional education, your personal agreement with that group's ideas is not a license to burn the existing system that was carefully developed by professionals over many years to the ground and then to replace it with something that will put our children at a disadvantage in any future pursuit outside of a degree from Hillsdale. It is time for you to stop fighting culture wars with our children's future and to engage seriously with the educators with whom you have been given the responsibility to partner and work thoughtfully and impartially for the benefit of our children. Thank you.
Darren Lawson on deck.
Good evening. April Foltz, West Rock Hill Township. So I'll start with, changing the entire social studies curriculum one week before school starts is a terrible idea. But throwing out a thoughtfully developed curriculum by knowledgeable staff so you can adopt a slanted, off-the-shelf Hillsdale curriculum is a whole new level of terror. You've used a fake campaign promise from two years ago to incorporate more civics education to rationalize ignoring all valid concerns for teachers, parents, and more than 40% of the current board, and implement the Hillsdale curriculum at any cost. But the sad reality is that none of this curriculum overhaul is even your own idea. You're just blindly following a predefined script. Overwhelm the community with policy changes, put administrators on notice, come up with a book objection process, and finally authorize an outside consultant to review the curriculum. But let's be even more honest, this isn't Jordan Adams' script either. While he may have founded his own consulting firm a few months ago, he hasn't ever strayed from his alma mater. Jordan Adams has spent his limited career advocating for school privatization and defunding of public schools, following in the footsteps of his former employer and mentor Larry Arnn, the president of Hillsdale College since 2000. Jordan Adams' brief and limited stint as a charter school teacher was under the supervision of Larry Arnn's daughter, after which he returned to Hillsdale promoting Arnn's new charter school initiative and the 1776 curriculum. Despite never having worked in a public school, he effectively spews the idea that public school teachers are destructive influences on our students, pushing liberal ideologies under the guise of education. under the guise of education. After all, these scare tactics have worked well for Hillsdale. It's why a school with fewer than 2,000 students enrolled has a nearly $1 billion annual enrollment or endowment. On behalf of Hillsdale, Larry Arnn has led the charge to dismantle public education, stating that it, quote, "destroys generations of people. It's devastating like the plague." In his efforts to discredit teachers, he's claimed that they're messing with people's children and feel entitled to do anything with them. You don't have to be an expert to educate a child because basically anyone can do it. And my personal favorite, teachers are trained in the dumbest parts of the dumbest colleges in the country.
Are you circling back to the curriculum?
This is all about the curriculum.
No, it's not specific to the curriculum.
It is Hillsdale curriculum.
This curriculum that's being presented tonight, the tax...
Yes, absolutely.
Or your stadium is not in there.
Absolutely, it is. This is the culture you want to bring to Penridge with the Hillsdale curriculum, and you wonder why the community thinks you don't support our teachers. Neither Hillsdale nor Jordan Adams are invested in the success of Penridge, but they are committed to padding their pockets for school privatization. And you either have no idea you're being used by someone with zero vested interest in our students, which will be bad, or you're complicit in the Hillsdale crusade to undermine U.S. public school systems, which is worse. All that said, it's likely you're going to ignore every opposing voice. You're going to vote in favor of the Hillsdale curriculum anyway. Three directors will defend Hillsdale, two more will vote without contributing a word to the discussion, and four will speak, but no divorce won't matter. So tonight, I think what you minimally owe us is the courtesy of every board member explaining why they do or do not support throwing out our existing social studies curriculum in favor of it.
Bradley Merkelgum, on deck. Darren Lawson?
Do you want to wait a minute until she comes?
No, she's not in the bathroom.
Yes, she is not in the bathroom. It's recorded. Please, please continue.
Darren Lawson, Perksey Borough. I'm going to get right to the fundamentals of this curriculum and keep it pretty simple. The 1776 curriculum was created to promote, amongst other things, patriotic history. To me, that's really creepy, man. Patriotic history is not patriotic. Patriotic history is not real history. Patriotic history is what is taught in countries like North Korea. You might not believe this, but I love this country too.
Same, same.
Absolutely.
I wouldn't want to live anywhere else in the world. I want my kids to love this country just like I love them, with its flaws. I don't want them to love the United States based on an illusion of the past. Can we please let our history teachers be history teachers?
Tina Hicks, I'm missing the middle name. Tina Hicks is on deck.
Bradley Merkelgum, Perksey Borough. Good evening. I'm here tonight to speak on the proposed social studies curriculums under review. Had the chance to review several of these proposed curriculums over the weekend, for the first through fifth grade as well as the ninth grade. The activities proposed by Jordan Adams are stale, uninventive, lack opportunity for differentiation, and will not leave students prepared for the modern world nor foster the habits of mind that are conveniently sprinkled throughout the curriculum. The content throughout the curriculums is one-sided at best and intentionally misleading at worst. My eldest son is going into third grade this year, so I've paid a little extra attention to it. While hoping to find a well-balanced piece for him to learn from, I instead found curriculum that read more like fanfiction than good history with misrepresentations of countless historical events. To further worsen this plan, your proposed curriculum creates a massive learning gap for this year's ninth graders when they go to 10th grade based on your current scope and sequence, unless of course that's your plan. To use this as an excuse to waste more of this community's money to pay Jordan Adams to rewrite that as well. Last I checked, we'd already wasted more than $12,000 of the taxpayers' money on an outside consultant to rewrite our curriculum that could have been done in a much more affordable and fair manner. $12,000 it seems to have mostly been spent for Jordan Adams to press copy and paste and plagiarize from other sources. Good curriculum often takes from other places. It makes decisions and pulls things in from a breadth of sources with many different ideas and many different schools of thought. It does not simply take from one biased source and then only include documents and elements that confirm that bias that it set up to create in the first place. Curriculum writing is a heavy burden. It's a heavy burden to shoulder. You are making decisions about what facts and stories get told to our children and which end up on the cutting room floor. The decision of what stories matter to be told in class should be a great burden to shoulder, always. Where teachers see this burden and realize that Mr... and realize its weight, Mr. Adams and the board's majority has instead chosen to weaponize that burden against our children, using it to try and force their own personal conclusions and agendas on them. Remember, good education does not seek to control minds, it seeks to unleash them.
Thank you. On deck, Cheryl Castro.
My friends call me Tina, just so there's no confusion. Anyway, the function of education is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically. Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education. Martin Luther King Jr. When I heard that we were going to implement this new curriculum after our teachers spent all that wonderful time on the curriculum that we had, I was of course appalled, and I said, "Okay, I'm going to look through some of this and see what's going on." I couldn't even get past how we were presenting Martin Luther King in this curriculum. Like, this is a man, and the civil rights movement is such a formative time in our history and something that we're still fighting for now, today. And yet, we're going to present him in a watered-down manner, in a way that makes him seem like he's just, you know, eh, this is how history is, you know, great. No, why aren't we teaching our kids, this is the history? Now, how do you, how do we see this still happening today? How can we do different going forward? How can you be part of what makes this world, this United States, a better place? Because ultimately, he brought it to one, he brought it this far and got shut down and killed over what he believed, and now we have, we have the ability to take it to the next step, but instead, we want to go backwards? I'm so confused. How are we going to allow children to think critically if we're just going to tell them, "This is how you should think. This is history. There's no room to discuss it. This is what it is." That's a problem. So I have very grave concerns over this Hillsdale's curriculum that you're voting on. I don't even understand why we're doing this. I'm also concerned because school starts next Monday, my kids are going to be in seventh and fifth grade officially, you know? Like, they're going to have, my fifth grader's going to have this curriculum potentially. How much time has his teacher had to be able to go over this stuff, to even learn this, to teach it in a way that actually allows them to still think critically? Or are you going to tell them how to teach it too? Like, they're not going to have time to find other resources to be able to help them to digest this in a way that doesn't completely indoctrinate them? Like, is that okay? Because I don't think it's okay at all. I have always been a person that's wanted to learn every side of how people believe things, because the fact is that if we can have civil conversations, we can get further. Not by indoctrination, not by just accepting that this is what it is, but by actually sitting there and having conversations. Thank you.
On deck, Joshua Hurdle.
I've been to several of these board meetings, but now I finally need to speak after reading the first lesson of the Hillsdale curriculum this morning. If you choose to limit your own child's knowledge, that's up to you. Ban books in your own house and send your children to Christian schools. But you have no right to limit the education of our children in a public school. You are not only affecting their education, you are affecting their actual minds and their futures. And nothing is more important to me than my child's mind and future. We know you aren't here to help our children or our teachers. Your actions have been very clear. This board of often narrow-minded, entitled, and ignorant members have been given a little bit of power with a political agenda that has nothing to do with the education of our children. You were voted in by people who believed the key words you chose for your platforms. And maybe we can't do anything about you tonight, but we can make sure that no one makes the mistake of voting in people like you again. Except me.
Is Paul Grant on their second session, but I'll go ahead and do it now. Can you add me for second session as well? I'll just do both. So Josh Hogan, West Rock Hill Township. I have not yet addressed Vermillion publicly. I've addressed it a heck of a lot at doors. I was going to wait until the second comment period because I want to see the product that's put on the field and in particular here from the people who wrote it directly to form a full opinion about it. However, once again, meeting after meeting, just hearing a lot of things, it's gotten a little too hard for me to not respond, so I'm going to go ahead and start responding. First of all, the opposition to Hillsdale and specifically 1776. Seven-month-old news, okay? Go back to January 18. Dr. Scheid, we did the overlay. We think that it enhanced the content being taught. Ms. Vitale, the content was exactly what we have already been teaching. They did an overlay. They did a side-by-side. Why didn't you all do this then? You're jumping on a bandwagon and it looks absurd to me. Secondly, American exceptionalism and patriotism, I keep hearing this, I keep hearing this. This goes back to the social studies debacle of last fall. Section 1605 of Pennsylvania School Code Law, that's 1949 Act 14, I'm going to read it word for word. "The study of the history of the United States, including the study of the Constitution of the United States and the study of the history and constitution of this commonwealth, shall also be such as will emphasize the good, worthwhile, and best features and points to the social, economic, and cultural development, the growth of the American family life, high standard of living of the United States citizen, the privileges enjoyed by such citizens, their heritage and its derivatives of and in our principles of government." I know that that was written in 1949, but that's still the law. If you have a problem with American exceptionalism, write your senator, write your representative, but that's in the law of how social studies is supposed to be taught in this commonwealth. Secondly, I keep hearing, how many times was slavery just brought up, as if we're like somehow ignoring slavery, okay? Third grade, Unit 3, fourth grade, Units 1 and 3, fifth grade, Units 2 and 3, which are exclusively about slavery, meaning social studies in fifth grade is more about slavery than anything else. They'll spend more time covering slavery than anything else. Ninth grade, Unit 3, of course, the big one we're talking about. There is a specific key point in there. Although the principle of equality on which the Declaration of Independence founded America was the exception to the rule in history, the practice and perpetuation of slavery contradicted this ideal. That point has to be taught. We're not running from anything. There's just a proper way you teach things in a proper order that gives kids context. I don't understand the slavery point. Like, we're not going to cover it enough? Kids are learning it. Out of all the curriculum we're covering tonight, kids are learning it in more than half of that curriculum. It's in the document several times. Getting a little bit frustrated with the constant appeals to emotion, I cannot believe that we're getting back to discussing DEI and other topics. You're at least showing your true partisanship in this. I'm excited personally to hear from Ms. Vitale, Ms. Raver. I want to hear from Dr. Scheid and Dr. Rabarchak about what this process has looked like over the summer, how did we land here. When I look at this curriculum just as a, I'm just a regular guy, I'm not a curriculum expert, it looks to me like quality content. So I'm ready to support, but I want to hear how that process went. Thank you.
Okay, that is it for the first public comments section.
Jordan, sorry. Before you start the agenda, I do want to clear something up because there's confusion with Hillsdale 1776 and 1776 Unites. Chester, if you could, since I can't share the website, I don't forget what I said, what I've advocated for it, and who I am. I never will. I'm consistent, and I just want to show you the difference. 1776 Unites, most assuredly, is not attempting to whitewash history. Here are their scholars, and I'll read their about paragraph before it gets pulled up. "The scholars gathered by 1776 Unites are experts on poverty, history, economic development, racial inequality, and a host of other issues critical to diagnosing the problems facing America today and offering real, actionable solutions. They hold views across the political spectrum but share a common concern for the health of our civic life and a focus on pragmatic, outcomes-based policies that transcend partisanship and group think." So I just wanted to make it clear, when we're talking about Hillsdale 1776, we're not talking about 1776 Unites, and these people would be quite shocked to learn that they're trying to whitewash history. So I just wanted to get that out of the way. I still have, all the points are taken about the Hillsdale, what you guys read out loud, I would like to hear more about that because some of those quotes were concerning out of context.
1776 Unites, Joan though, is in the curriculum as a resource as well. Just wanted to clarify that.
It is. It is in the curriculum. And when I first presented it, I believe what I said, and I can go back, I still have them saved on...
I'm not questioning what you said.
No, no, I just want to make it clear for everyone here. When I said it, when I introduced it two years ago or whatever it was at this point, what I said was, "Bring all of these sources to the table. Let's look at everything. Let's have our children exposed to all different perspectives." It wasn't, "Let's ram through a curriculum that's based on one person's perspective" and not given time for our teachers and our community to really digest it.
Okay. Then, starting with our first agenda item, is middle school RILA curriculum? Ms. Raver?
I'm Sarah Raver. I'm the K-12 supervisor of RILA, for those of you who don't know me. I have two, it's really three courses that we're looking at because there's a half-year seventh grade course, full-year seventh grade course, and a full-year eighth grade course, but I'm only doing the first two units of all of those courses. So seventh grade is the same, if that helps. So I'm not going to present the same thing twice. What you see up here is the outline of the first two courses, so where it says FY in parentheses, that's just the full-year course. Again, they look the same, just a little bit longer in the full-year course because we cover things a little bit more in-depth and work a little bit more on these strategies that the students in that course need to still work through. Okay, this is Unit 1 of the seventh grade course. This is just really a time for students to do some research. We collaborate with the librarians. It's called A Look Into the Sixties because this is a precursor to their first unit of study, Unit 2, which uses The Outsiders as the core text. So students do their own research, they look into certain aspects of the 1960s, and in the full-year course, we also use a notes-and-note, nonfiction signposts and provide instruction in this unit so that students are able to evaluate, analyze, synthesize nonfiction text as they research and then as they continue through the course, because we found that that's an area of need, which is why we front-load that in the first unit for the full-year course. We do not do that in the half-year course, it's not a need there, which is why you won't see it reflected in the unit. I will scroll, this is very fun when the microphone doesn't move. I will scroll down so you can see the resources and everything listed, and in case you have any questions. Hi, Chester. It's okay. It's been a while since I've done this, but again, big ideas, essential questions, skills, and content are all color-coded because they're supposed to match. You can see how students will try to answer those essential questions themselves as they navigate the unit. This has not changed. You'll see in the content the signposts that I was referring to a couple minutes ago. Those are for nonfiction texts, and there really is a strategy for students to be able to use when they encounter these things. to use when they encounter these things, ask, what does this make me think about? What am I learning from this text? Why did the author choose to quote this person or only use this type of information? So, that's what that is. So again, this is the full-year course. You won't see any instructional resources listed in the half-year course because there are no required resources. Students do their own research through the library, using our databases, and with the support of the librarians and their teachers. What you see here listed as required resources are just for the Notice and Note signposts, which come from the book that we use, Reading Nonfiction by Kylene Beers and Robert Prost. Okay, from there, move to a blank page. This is the second unit. Again, this is the same for half-year and full-year students. These are the big ideas and essential questions. The instructional resource required for all students is The Outsiders. Again, content and skills correlated to the big ideas and essential questions. And the instructional resources would be The Outsiders, Robert Frost's Home, Nothing Gold Can Stay, and then we do show the film to analyze against the novel and have students discuss the different mediums in which literature can be adapted. There's two optional resources there, a letter from S.E. Hinton and an article just about her as an author and her background to support students as they may need it. That's teacher choice, whether they need to use that or want to offer it to their students supplementally. Questions about seventh grade, these two units?
What is a change in this curriculum versus what we had previously?
So these two units were written by my team and overseen by me. Nothing has changed here, except for in the Notice and Note signposts, we did replace or change three of the articles in there per the recommendation that was given to me.
And what was the recommendation?
The recommendation was to remove them or find alternatives.
But why? Why was that recommended?
There was a discussion regarding the content of them. Was it the most applicable and relevant article for what the students need to do? Honestly swapping them out. I chose the replacement and what to do instead, and it does not compromise the instruction. So I was fine moving forward with that.
Thank you.
What's the difference between this course and the standard English course for seventh and eighth graders?
In general?
Yeah.
So the standard seventh grade and eighth grade English course is really more of your classic literature course, right? It's where you're doing your analysis of more of the classic literature, you're being exposed to all of those types of general English requirements. It's where we do almost all of our writing in terms of what you would think of traditional writing, essay writing, different genres. This course is really more of like a reading skills and strategies course. It may have had that name at some point because it's meant to, I mean, first and foremost, we want students to be literate, of course, and be able to engage in literature. But part of the purpose of this course is to get students to want to read and to want to read on their own, as well as to be able to find resources and books that are relevant to them, that they want to go and explore, and that they know that when I pick up a book, I can read this, analyze it, and think about it myself. That's a little bit different than English because we're really preparing them differently in an English course than we are in reading. We're, in my opinion, very lucky to have these courses in our middle school curriculum. I taught them when I was at South, and I'm a reading specialist. So anytime we can give middle school readers more time to engage with reading and hone in on their skills before we send them into high school where all they have to do is read, no matter where they go and what subject they're in, the better off they'll be.
And how are students guided into this course versus the regular English course? Or is it guided, or do they choose, or how does that work?
Okay. It is guided. So seventh grade, because we have the two classes, every seventh grade student does take reading, whether it's half-year or full-year. Eighth grade is different, so I'm gonna kind of put that to the side for right now, but the process is similar. So we know that every seventh grader is going to take a reading course, just a matter of half-year or full-year. I pull into a spreadsheet using Linkit several data points for each student, grades from multiple years, PSSA scores for multiple years, CDT benchmarks for fall and winter, their grades in reading and English courses, as well as any other historical data we have that is relevant. I put that into a spreadsheet for every single student. They are then ranked according to a percentage of available data. So that means if you don't have available data, you don't, you know, you're not a zero, you're actually a hundred, because we only, we only give a percentage based on what we know. That spreadsheet is given to teachers. Every teacher on the seventh grade team sits down at a meeting and they go student by student. Does this data make sense for what you see in the classroom, for what you know this student is capable of doing or can handle, and does therefore their placement into that course, that default placement based on the data, make sense? And we have conversations. I then attend, building principal attends, and we make sure that we're placing every kid into the course that's right for them. We try to push as many kids as possible into the, out into the higher-level course and challenge them. We also want to make sure that we're not missing anybody and making sure that we are really using this time. This is truly a gift of time in middle school, Dr. Rabarchuk's favorite saying, the gift of time. This is truly a gift of time where we can give students more time to make sure they have those skills they need. We follow the same process for eighth grade, but we only have the full-year course, so it's a little bit different because not everybody then takes the course. Other questions for seventh grade? Okay. So here is the outline again for just the first two units of the eighth grade full-year class, which takes us almost halfway through the year. I mean, it basically takes us to the winter break. Okay. This first unit is really just about students understanding themselves as readers, as well as the teachers understanding them as readers, and getting them kind of back into that love for reading. What do you want to read? Why are you here? What can you gain from this class? We use the fiction signposts in this course because in seventh grade we've done the nonfiction signposts. So again, they're just used to help students understand how they can engage with a text, ask themselves some questions as they read through something, and then discuss them, which is the anchor questions and signposts you'll see on the side there. We talk a lot about a purpose for reading here in this eighth grade class. Am I reading this for myself to learn? Am I reading it because my science teacher said I had to? Am I reading this because I really want to? Or do I have to read it just because I need to learn something? And I do encourage, our eighth grade teachers are really great about identifying different things to read that you want to learn about or that entertain you that aren't just a regular book that you would go to a library and get. If you're building something, you're reading the directions, right? So why are you reading that? What purpose are you setting? And then if that's your purpose, how do you make sure you're reading that in the right way? So that's a big part of this unit as well, to kind of get students to understand they're reading all day long for a different purpose, and we just have to find out what their purpose is that helps them tap into those skills. Again, the only resources you'll see here are the short excerpts that come from, these are from full-length texts or poems, but they come from the Notice and Note Strategy Book for Fiction Signposts, same authors that I mentioned before. And then we have optional picture books that just demonstrate some of the specific signposts, just more opportunities for students to practice identifying them before they move into the first full text of the unit. This unit, to answer a question I think I'm about to get, is unchanged from what my team and I had written before. Okay, that takes us to the second unit, which is the first full-length text of eighth grade. These are the big ideas and essential questions. The name of this unit is Trust Builds Friendship, which is the lens we're reading through. And you'll see specific questions and content and skills regarding pictures and words because the core text, one of the core texts is a graphic novel. So we have to talk to students about how you read pictures when you're also reading with words. Okay, so the content and skills listed here. The change that came from this unit, I'll scroll down to the instructional resources first, this will make sense. This is now a teacher-choice unit, so the original unit included the invention of Hugo Cabaret as the graphic novel instructional resource, which we've done here for a while. The movie is also one of the resources that we use in the nonfiction articles to support it. We have added another choice for the instructional resource, which is Around the World in 80 Days, and then the accompanying 2004 film. So teachers have the option to choose which text is most appropriate for the students they have in front of them. I trust my teachers to be able to make that choice based on the group of students they have, the ability level they have, the interests that they have, and knowing how they engaged in that first unit, what type of readers are in front of you, what do you really need to address in order to make the choice for the best instructional resource here in this unit. So if I go back up to the content, you'll see what was added would have just been under Around the World in 80 Days. So when we develop our content, we develop it overall, kind of bullet number one. And then I ask my teams to really delve in once we pick an instructional resource that we know is approved, and delineate the content as specifically as possible for the resource we have, so we can engage, make sure that students are engaging in our programming in a systematic way. Of course, this isn't the only thing they're going to do, but we know all students will look at the content this way. So you'll see, I think, three areas here where the content was added specifically if teachers choose Around the World in 80 Days because they refer to specific characters. For example, Phineas versus Hugo, we need to delineate that differently. Otherwise, this remains as it was.
And that's entirely based upon the teacher's choice, is that...
Which, which instructional resource?
Either go Hugo Cabaret or Around the World in 80 Days.
That's how we use teacher-choice units here, yes. Other questions about this unit or these two units, I should say? Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Raver.
Actually, I do have a question. So if, so we had been following a practice of 60 days for curriculum review when it was initially presented at a curriculum meeting. If this were to pass next week, are your teachers ready to roll this out and implement this?
So these two units in both courses are units that were written by the team who will be implementing them under my direction, as well as units that we have, or at least Hugo Cabaret and The Outsiders, we've used those core instructional resources for the last several years here in Penridge. So I feel these two units are ready for them to implement next week. I meet with them tomorrow at 8:00 AM to go over all of this, and we'll, we'll just look at these two units for each course. Of course, the questions will be, then what? But that's for me to do next and bring back to you. But we're ready for these two to implement, and we have the resources. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Yes, thank you, Sarah. Before we go into social studies, I just wanted to point out that for the C agenda item for the progress reports, it's, I've only posted for public view. I'm not trying to do a presentation, I just wanted, or an update, I just put them on there for public view. Okay, so then, moving on to elementary and ninth grade social studies, Ms. Vitale.
Am I doing ninth grade first or elementary? Does it matter?
Anybody want to hear elementary first or ninth grade first, or doesn't matter?
Hi, good evening. Do you prefer elementary or ninth grade first? Elementary. Might as well start at the beginning. It might take me a while. There's several documents, and I do want to apologize to the board and to the public for the different look of each of the documents. This was done fairly quickly, and for the entire summer I was doing them on paper notes. So to get them up on the computer, we just used whatever. Some are in Atlas, some are in Word, so that's why they look different. Okay, Grade 1, Unit 1. I'm gonna use my notes. The first unit is Rules and Responsibilities, of course, using PA State standards. Color coding is the same, starting with the color blue, and then moving on to red, and then the big ideas, essential questions, content, and skills match from there. First unit is Rules and Responsibilities for first grade. Some of the topics include rules in the classroom, equality, written rules and laws, responsibilities in the school community, roles of local government, consequences for inappropriate actions, information and news sources for emergency and communication purposes, voting within the classroom and school community, and learning to compromise. Unit number, oh, and instructional resources. For first grade, we have Core Knowledge, Peppleco, Epic, Brain Pop Junior, and Mac and Bio. Some of those are online resources, and they, Core Knowledge is one of the instructional resources that is not necessarily required. It is to be used as a tool for the teachers to consult. And I'll get more into that when we get to the next couple of units. Thank you, Dr. Rabarchuk. Unit 2 is Geography. The content in geography includes places and geographic reference to physical features, geographic tools such as a map key, cardinal directions, et cetera, physical characteristics in a community, physical characteristics in a region, climate and the way it determines the way people live, the difference between my community, my county, and state parks, characteristics unique to my region, lakes, rivers, and streams that impact people. And the third unit in Grade 1 is People, Places, and the Economy. Content, oop, hold on. Events that sometimes have problems or dilemmas, so talking about weather, lack of food, disease. There are many ways to get historical information, starting to teach the learning of using instructional resources appropriately, like the Internet. There are many people who contribute to a community. We talk about bus drivers, the principal, teachers. Communities that celebrate many cultural holidays, Thanksgiving traditions, religious holiday differences, Americans who played a significant role in history. There are many significant American landmarks far and near, talking about the Statue of Liberty, Mount Rushmore, Plymouth, et cetera. Classroom wants and needs, getting into a little bit of the economy, and making choices based on classroom interests. So that's Grade 1.
Could we stop at each grade just for clarification?
Yes.
But is the, other than the additional resources, is there anything else that's changed in this from what we had existing?
Yes, this, this grade has changed slightly, not significantly, but slightly. So when you ask if it's changed, there's a change from last year, but then there's also a change from what my committee and I had designed earlier in the year. So yeah, so in essence, there are two changes that have been made.
Can you elaborate on those changes?
So, for example, the committee had talked about units being responsibilities and rules. So that's our civics and government, then geography and important places and people. But the changes being very slight in there. So we, I tried to keep this as close to what the committee that was formed that this last school year, 2223, as possible without big changes.
And you said there were, there were two changes?
So the curriculum that the first grade teachers were teaching 2223 was not the curriculum. We were working on a new scope and sequence, a new pacing guide. Any other questions for first grade? Second grade? Again, the color coding is the same, so that the big ideas... Again, the color coding is the same, so that the big ideas, essential questions, content, and skills match. The first unit in Grade Two follows state standards for history, civics, and economics for Grade Two in Pennsylvania. And the content, again, talking about wants and needs based on the environment in which students live, what school rules are and how to apply them. Students will know what it means to, and the responsibilities to be a member of their community. So we talk about their own communities, like Kirkcudie, Dublin, Sellersville, et cetera. Students will know leaders like the school superintendent and mayor and school district leaders. Students will know how environmental changes, like housing developments, change, like weather-related changes can have an impact on people, natural disasters. So talking about things that happened, you know, recently with Hawaii, so that would be something we would maybe mention. Students will know how to make choices about whether to buy an item or not, so pulling in some of that economics. Unit two, Our Big and Beautiful State and Country. Physical characteristics of our country, like rivers, lakes, mountains, plains, United States Constitution and its writers, the Bill of Rights and Freedom of Religion, speech and press, the American flag, Star Spangled Banner, and the Pennsylvania state symbols. Unit three is called Our World. Content, again, physical maps, cultural celebrations and remembrances, changes in oceans, rivers, and creeks, and the relationship between the United States and Canada and their geography. Questions for Grade Two?
Could we just do the same for each one of these as to what changed in your proposed curriculum versus what, in conjunction with Mr. Adams' proposal?
So first and second grade, I wrote for the most part, and Mr. Adams just, we, we wrote in isolation, and then we got together on Zoom, and we edited and revised and compromised. So grades first and second didn't really change all that much. When he and I talked about it, we were, we were pretty agreeable. I was asked to use Core Knowledge as the text for that.
Is that just as a resource, is it, or is that as the sole text?
These are all for resources, they're for teachers to consult and not to use as a strict required source.
Is there anything in the proposed change that you feel uncomfortable with?
Not for first or second grade.
Okay.
Could you elaborate on what Core Knowledge is?
Core Knowledge is a text that I was introduced to this year, and we actually just received copies, paper copies of Core Knowledge. And from what I had done research on, it's very picture-heavy for the younger grades, so I did like that as a text, that these, and the graphics are very colorful, and they're actual pictures, they're not cartoons or drawings, so that was appealing. We did look through them, and we, we literally got them three days ago, so I wasn't able to really spend a lot of time with them, except that they do have a downloadable version online. So I did download each of the grades while I was working on this so that I could kind of stick to the resource. And I then used what we had come up with on a committee in 2223, and then looked at Core Knowledge and kind of matched those two.
Why wouldn't the resources we had before be included as a listed resource in addition to the Core Knowledge?
There are, they are, yeah.
Can I just have you clarify? You said that you and he, meaning Mr. Adams, wrote in isolation. So you each wrote curriculum. Okay.
Any other questions for Grade Two? So Grade Three looks a little bit different on the screen. If I didn't write it in Atlas, this was written in, in Word. Mr. Ravitchak, or Dr. Ravitchak, can you go to the very first page of this? And go, see where it says instructional resources? Thank you. So I'd like to point out that, it's okay. The mouse is jumpy over here. For instructional resources, we felt that it was important to have a disclaimer. The word required is in quotation marks. It's kind of underneath where the closed captioning is. It's okay. Resources indicate those resources provided by the district for educators to consult in their lesson planning. Educators have discretion as to the extent they use a student or teacher resource in their lessons and instruction. Educators may supplement official instructional resources according to existing district policy, which requires curriculum supervisor approval of all supplemental resources. Unit one for third grade is called American Places and People. The content in Unit One, kinds of terrain and major landforms in America, advantages of the American landscape for human habitation, the 50 states, so that's the geography of the 50 states, the use of maps in determining our location and special features about our country, the ways that a region's natural resources and landscapes play a role in decisions made by historical individuals and groups, similarities shared by and differences between Native Americans, the ways in which culture is formed among Native Americans, the role of the family in Native American communities, and Bucks County Native Americans, how they lived, and the landscape and climate of the time. And again, under required resources, it does say Hillsdale 1776, but I'd like to emphasize that that is for consultation. Unit two, Exploration and Settlement. Content is the reasons why different Europeans were motivated to explore and settle the New World, Native Americans' responses to the settlement of new people, the clashes between Native Americans and Europeans, the purposes for establishing the Jamestown colony, the reasons why the pilgrims decided to leave England, the role Pocahontas had in saving Jamestown, how people who left England and came to a new land discovered that they would need to change and make new decisions, the lessons that can be learned from Jamestown's experiments. Unit three, Colonial America.
Could you go back to Jamestown? Sorry, I was reading something, of course, get down. Does it really speak about communism?
No. I did not see that. This is, yeah, that may be somewhere else, I didn't see that. Content for Unit Three, the way England settled and governed its colonies compared to other countries, the main industries of the three colonial regions, the ability of ordinary people to believe what they wanted and to own a home, the ways that slavery expanded in the New World in general and in the British colonies, the role slave labor played in the colonies, the ways in which Americans were allowed to govern themselves, the benefits the English provided as colonies, and the ideas of democracy and unity from events such as the Great Awakening. And that's Grade Three. And the difference is there.
Yeah, and then I have a follow-up to it.
This is quite different from what the third grade used to be. So 2223, third grade would have taught Native Americans the, most of the year, so going regionally throughout the United States and studying climate and customs. And then we had come up with in committee, studying geography, the 50 states, continents, oceans, settlement patterns, zoom into Bucks County geography, and then we talked about history over time with Eastern North America, North America, and then the northeast woodlands, southeast woodlands, Great Plains, southwest desert, and northwest.
When comparing what you came up with versus what was in consultation with Mr. Adams, what, did you have any concerns with what was being proposed?
Colonial America in third grade was, was something that I went back and forth with him a little bit about. We did compromise on a few things, and I was able to bring some of what we had previously had. There is room to, to do Native Americans similarly to the way the teachers had been teaching them in third grade prior to that, so they could use some of their materials that they have.
And I don't understand why it's listed as required resource versus, you said, consultation. Like, even though it says required, why do we say it's required if it's really just can be consulted? Because originally, when this was discussed months ago, and Hillsdale was to be potentially as a resource, not to be the sole textbook, for, for lack of a better term. So a required resource sounds very different than a consultative resource.
Yes.
I agree. And it's, it's, it could be misleading, the way it's written in there. I was, I brought that up with Mr. Adams, and he said that it was...
Teacher-facing.
That it was, that board leadership asked him to, to say that it was required.
I'll speak to that, too. The main reason was for that it's teacher-facing, not student-facing. And Mr. Adams, Ms. Vidal, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but had also mentioned that it's like you're using it as a framework, but teachers have the autonomy and the discretion to develop their learning experiences, activities, assessments, all those kinds of things, but using it as like the foundational, to look at it and read through it and consult with it.
Can we call it a consultative resource then, as opposed to a required resource? Because the misnomer seems confusing for sure.
And to say something is a framework is very different from saying that we're going to take certain pieces of things and put them into a curriculum. Framework means you, this is going to be your framework, the structure around which you build a course. But that's, but that is not what it was presented. So here again is another example of how we're told one thing, and then we come to find out another. Like, Mr. Adams, who admitted himself that he is not qualified, not certified, to write curriculum in Pennsylvania.
No, that was the supervisor. That wasn't...
Jonathan asked if he possessed the qualifications for writing curriculum.
For clarity, only people that can write curriculum in Pennsylvania have to have either a supervisor certificate or a principal certificate. Those are the only two that are...
Then that would go against if the teachers say that they use right curriculum as well.
The teacher's in consultation with the supervisor. But this, no, but he was saying, the confusion here is that we thought he was consulting with our supervisors as opposed to writing a separate curriculum that's being offered and then compared. But the Pennsylvania school code requires you to have either a supervisor certification or a principal certification in order to write curriculum.
Jonathan, then I guess we've been violating board policy for years because Dr. Bolton specifically said on numerous occasions that supervisors do not write curriculum, that our teachers write curriculum.
Well, this, this is what, if you have the difference in the school code, then you can bring it up. But if it was done incorrectly in the past, it doesn't mean that we're going to continue to do it incorrectly.
Well, I don't know, but you're not a school law attorney, so I'd be interested in hearing an actual school law attorney, not a...
I want to go back to, just real quick, to Ms. Vidal. I know that you said that Native Americans was taken out, but Dr. Ravitchak, maybe you can speak to this. That was discussed even before the Vermillion contract was even in place, that it was going to be lessened. It wasn't like a recommendation from Vermillion to say, we are taking out the Native Americans. I don't think we want to speak to that, but that was something that was discussed way early on in the year.
Well, we, we discussed that when we were unpacking the standards and seeing the standards that were involved, the third grade, when we were developing the renewing curriculum. And some of the Native American information, was it, was it more extensive than we had anticipated it needed to be within the curriculum itself? So we were looking to realign some things, but we had not done anything at that point.
Right, right. But it's not that it's eliminated, it's in there, it's not as heavy as it used to be with the clinic.
It is definitely reduced to, to more specifics and...
And just, just for clarity sake, because I did ask for clarification, and this was directly from Dr. Bolton. State code requires five years of successful teaching in the appropriate curriculum area, as well as a principal or supervisor certification.
Sorry, not to move on from your point, Jonathan, I just have one more thing to say, too. So, well, maybe more, but for now, but also, I just want to remind and maybe clarify, too, that it was when, it was shortly after I got on the board, and Dr. Ravitchak, there was a piloted social studies curriculum that the board did not support two years ago. So I know that it's like some things that the committee worked on or that teachers had in the past. And Ms. Vidal, I know that you were looking at some, like going through some of the elementary schools and looking at some of the gems that maybe the teachers were using to share, which is still, you know, possibility for them to be able to use. But not that there was, like, different to Ms. Ravers, where she says, you know, like, that's what they used to have. There wasn't something throughout the district that like all third grade taught and uses, all second grade taught. So it is a little bit different, where I know what you're saying, like, to compare what's changed, what's not, but there wasn't something consistent throughout, like it was all a little bit more... Just wanted to, if you want to speak a little bit on that.
I don't really think that the issue is whether something is different, or we were going to make changes. Yes, at that time, a couple of years ago, we did look at the elementary things, and we were making suggestions. The difference is that we were working in collaboration with the teachers, and the teachers and the supervisor were working together. That's not the issue. Making changes to, changes to a curriculum is not the issue. I see some, you know, discussion in the public about board members not wanting civics or economics. All nine of us said, yes, let's strengthen, strengthen our civics and economics. Our particular issue is with the way that this is being done. It is not being done properly. There's a lot of question marks here. Things are changing day by day from what this person was supposedly hired to do, to now we're finding out, seven days before school begins, that no, in fact, he was writing curriculum. This is the issue, and it's a repeated pattern that we keep going.
It's a recommendation, review and recommend?
It's not a recommendation, Jordan, please be honest. It's a recommendation with...
But what you're saying, like, to say that he's not going to write curriculum or give recommendations along with the resources, yes. That's not being dishonest, I'm sorry.
He said that he does not write curriculum. We just heard something...
He did not say that he does not write curriculum. It's up to the board to adopt and vote for it, but it's not that he's consulting and recommending.
No, he said he does not write curriculum.
And I will, like, you said that, you know, when we, when we did not approve the pilot that the social studies teachers, you said that we were collaborating. But I would say that in that moment, the teachers were also not feeling that we were collaborating when we didn't support that. So I feel like to say that that was goodbye then, but not now, is not...
I don't...
That didn't happen, the committee didn't have...
It doesn't seem like we had teachers involved in this process. This is another thing, and our social studies supervisor is shaking her head no. That teachers were not involved in this process. That is not collaboration.
You did ask if you could bring some of them in, so I, and I remember us saying like, yeah, but obviously, it's the summertime, so I understand that that's an issue that teachers are off, but it's not that we said, don't consult teachers.
No, that was never said, but it didn't, the teachers did not write this, so I can't say that they did when they didn't.
But I guess, again, I would go back to the piece that I know teachers would, some teachers would disagree with me. But again, I feel like there's still a lot of autonomy and discretion for them to have a ton. It isn't like you have to do this, and this is what you're doing. You have that freedom to develop your assessments, your learning experiences, which is your lesson plans, your activities, within that framework. So again, I don't, I don't know, again, Ms. Vidal, if you disagree with me, but I feel like they still have a lot of things that they will be able to have their ownership of, as well as like with the supplemental resources, that it goes through you to approve some of those.
Is there any reason, Jordan, that it couldn't be listed as a resource then, as opposed to a required? Like, why that language?
Well, to me, that, this would be your point resource. But obviously, you use, I feel like you always have a me, a de heavy, and then you have all the supplemental resources that you pull in.
But required carries with it certain connotation, meaning...
But if you don't have required, I feel like then no teachers even going to look at it because of...
But it sounds like that's what you...
But it has to be. But to be fair, I'm not, and I'm not trying to be one-sided. The stuff that's in there and the stuff they pulled in is, is not, to me, to the point, I know there's a lot of people saying like, they disagree with it, but I truly do not hear a ton of specifics of, to point it to those specific lessons that I feel like would be so far-fetched to say that it would have like...
I would just feel much more comfortable if it was, is a resource. You can have many or multitude of different resources.
So originally, when the elementary social studies curriculum was brought to us, TCI was listed as the required resource. And part of the concern was even that first and second grade teachers were being told they had to cover a certain percentage of the book and actually read it aloud to first and second graders who couldn't, who's, when it was completely over their heads. So you have first and second graders who weren't even able to absorb the content, and... And we were going to be buying disposable yearly annual books that were required for these kids who couldn't even read the books that we were going to require disposable versions from. So when you talk about required, there are required books, and then there's supplementary resources.
But if you're uncomfortable with that then, why are you comfortable with it now?
No, I was uncomfortable with buying disposable annual books for first and second graders that they couldn't read. I was also uncomfortable with them not being, with them being required to read those books in certain percentages instead of them being collaborative, interactive lessons. Nothing in here is requiring them to read certain percentages of textbooks and not have collaborative, interactive lessons when you think about the fact that most of our kids with special needs are only included, for the most part, in social studies and science. And if they're sitting there listening to someone read a textbook to them in the front of the room, so that's not what we're talking about doing here.
So what's your understanding of the word required, then, and its utilization in this document?
Well, what is your concern with it being required?
Because it didn't sound like it's required.
Wait, let me finish my question. With having the autonomy, because what Ms. Vitale read, you know, ahead of time that it's supposed to be used within consultation, so with having that there and with that being required, why is that something that you, yeah, why is that an issue that you don't? Because you can have supplemental resources, you can bring all those other things in.
Because language is important and that word carries with it.
But what about the language that she read beforehand that goes with that? To me, it feels like it gives you a lot of...
Internally inconsistent, I would make it consistent, then. If the one is, takes superiority to it, because somebody else could argue, if we lose institutional history, somebody say, "Look, this says required, you better be teaching this." So if it's not consistent, then just firm it up.
Jonathan, we have required textbooks for almost every class.
And what does that mean, though, to say it's required?
That doesn't mean that they have to read every page of the book.
But is that the only, but they have to use that resource? I thought it was an optional resource. So you're saying the word required means they have to use that?
Right.
Okay, well, that's different than saying that it was optional at the teacher's discretion.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is what's optional at the teacher's discretion is the learning experience within them. There's so many multiple parts, part of the framework. There's so much listed within the Hillsdale 1.2 piece that you're not obviously going to go through and use every single one. So that part's like, it's not required, but you have to use that as a framework to go base off of, just like the assessment. There's an assessment in there. And it's not required to use that assessment.
Wasn't it originally proposed that the 1776 curriculum was going to be a resource as opposed to a required?
It was supposed to be overlaid, however, at that time, there was never any evidence of that overlay during the time the teachers were working on it.
So, but I'm losing something, though, here. What happened, what changed that made it move from a optional resource to a required content?
That was never discussed as a possibility.
That always was, Jen, even before, yes, even before like all the divide and everything. Yes, it was.
Saying that you are going to use things and pop them in as a resource, going back again to June of '21, before you guys were even on the board, I will repeat what I said back then. Expose children to information from a wide variety of resources. And then that was sort of how it was supposed to be, where we're just going to overlay. I'm not even sure what that word really means. And now I'm hearing that Hillsdale is the framework. These are very different words and they each have different meanings.
Well, it's not just Hillsdale. Cornology's in there, Edelgo, all the ones that she listed as well.
Apparently it's also affiliated, you know, sort of the same thing. When you're saying that Hillsdale is going to be...
It's not affiliated, it's been around for 20 years.
When you're saying that Hillsdale...
Hillsdale 1776 just came out a few years ago.
When you're saying that Hillsdale is going to be the framework, I hope you can understand why people in the community hear "framework", that is going to be the basis of our curriculum, because that is what you're saying. Whether you think you're saying...
No, no, I'm okay with that. What you're saying is, I'm in support of that. We might agree to disagree, but I'm okay with it.
We were not in support of having Hillsdale become our curriculum.
Dr. Barczyk, I think you're waiting to speak.
My only recommendation was going to be on that page. I have it up on the screen. The instructional resources, if possibility is, other courses we have such as math is just taking out the required and optional and just having the list of instructional resources.
Honestly, my concern with just leaving them even as resources, and you can, but the way that this was developed, having board members as opposed to teachers involved in the writing of the curriculum, having an outside consultant who we were told was not going to be writing curriculum, but in fact apparently did write curriculum. My concern is that we can say on this piece of paper, it's only supposed to be a resource, but everybody in the community just heard the board say, "No, no, Hillsdale is going to be the framework of our social studies curriculum."
No, I did. Don't say the board, "I did." You can say, "Jordan did." That's fine. Save the issue.
But nobody objected to it, so that's an issue, because that is not something that was ever agreed to to make it our framework. It wasn't, and that can't be said.
This is the recommendation, it's here tonight. It's here.
Ms. Vitale, if it's listed as just an instructional resource, does that give your teachers the latitude to be able to teach in the way that you and they would feel comfortable with?
If it's, yes. Even if it, yes.
Without interfering?
Even if it was required.
That's what she just said. She said, "Yes."
Okay.
They're saying, "Take it away."
Yeah, if it's not... Teachers can use it at their discretion. If they want to look at Lesson 1.4 and they find something that's useful and there might be a primary source in Lesson 1.4 that is easy to use and it's something that they find appropriate, then I don't see why they can't reference it.
And I think that's what you mentioned several months ago, is that the Hillsdale curriculum referenced primary sources, and to the extent that the teachers wanted to use primary sources as opposed to interpretation of those sources, they could do so, right?
Yes.
Do you want to go to fourth grade?
Yes, fourth grade. Fourth grade is called Founding America and Pennsylvania Then and Now. Unit one is American Revolution. Content is the American Revolution, Great Britain's need for more money to avoid new wars, the roles of Benjamin Franklin in the French and Indian War and the American Revolution, Stamp Act, Tea Act, Boston Massacre, on and on, the Second Continental Congress in Philadelphia, and the main reasons columnists declared independence from Great Britain, the meaning of all men are created equal, the Declaration of Independence and its ideas about rights and their protection by government, and the major events that changed the outcome of the War of Independence, crossing the Delaware and Battles of Trenton, Brandywine, et cetera, George Washington's leadership and actions. Unit two, Creating the Constitution. Content, the founders' view of human beings as a mixture of good, bad, intelligent, misunderstanding, et cetera, the reasons for the Constitution and the Constitutional Convention at Philadelphia's Independence Hall and the role of Ben Franklin, the risks of majority tyranny and the abuse of power, the differences of power between national, state, and local governments, main roles and responsibilities of each branch of government, both in the U.S. and the Pennsylvania constitutions, the examples of checks and balances in national and state constitutions, the protections for speech and religion in the First Amendment, the reasons why a free press and the right to assemble secure freedom and the function of trial by jury ensuring liberty and justice. Unit three, The First Presidents. Content is the ways in which George Washington set examples for American leaders, anti-slavery efforts led by Pennsylvanians, the risks during George Washington's presidency and the warnings in his farewell address, the Federalist and Democratic Republican Parties, the importance of the transfer of power between the Adams and Jefferson presidencies and the ways in which Thomas Jefferson changed the power of the government. And then the last unit, Unit four is Our State, Pennsylvania Then and Now. Content, major physical features of Pennsylvania, the relationship between Pennsylvania's climate and the lifestyle and industry of Pennsylvanians, William Penn's biography and major contributions, the role of Pennsylvania and its citizens that played in colonial times, the American Revolution and the writing of the Constitution, the different transportation systems found in Pennsylvania, and the relationships between Pennsylvania's geography and the goods and services for which it is known.
And again with this, were there any significant changes between what you and your committee had developed versus in consultation with Mr. Adams?
Typically, fourth grade is all Pennsylvania all the time, which I don't know that that's necessarily, you know, a thing that we need to spend our entire fourth grade year doing. So that was a change, infusing that American history in there.
And the other issue that's been brought up even in public comment was the time lead on this. Is this something that can be done now? I mean, normally, from a curriculum development standpoint, would this be something we would be looking at to implement next year as opposed to this year from a strategic rollout?
I would absolutely prefer that this be pushed to next year, yes.
I see the resources listed are TBD. Are there current resources for grade four?
So we have a textbook in mind, but we haven't had any, we haven't had any further movement on either purchasing that textbook or getting training on that textbook. Typically, what you would do is you would call in textbook companies and then have them give you, you know, a guided tour, say, of their textbook, and then you would usually fill out a matrix or some sort of a collaborative form where you are looking for things that are, you look for certain things in a textbook, and we haven't done that with this textbook. But it's a local company, they're in Landsthal, and it's a Pennsylvania, it's full, it's only Pennsylvania, this textbook. So it's really just factual information about Pennsylvania. So it's something we would have to further look into.
Have you been stopped from doing that, or why, okay?
No, I just, yeah, we didn't have the time.
Did you have a textbook prior that you were going to use?
No, a lot of teachers use resources from local government officials. So they go on field trips or they go to, you know, their representatives and then get materials and that's how they create their lessons.
So there never was a textbook course anyway?
But, so, yeah, we've always taught Pennsylvania history, fourth grade. That's been the standard here. But being a social studies person, I'm interested in, now you're bringing in something completely new, these concepts going back to the, you know, the American Revolution and everything that led up to that. Some of those ideas that were listed were pretty big ideas for fourth grade. So that's going to be, we definitely need to look at, how are you going to present that idea and really teach it meaningfully to a fourth grader? So that text, those haven't existed and the fourth grade teachers currently have never had experience teaching those particular ideas. Okay.
And I brought up concerns, especially with Washington's farewell address and the difficulty of that text. And I was told that I could help the teachers find summaries or pull out certain points and not necessarily have to read that text verbatim. Any more questions about fourth grade? Okay, fifth grade.
Before we move on with this, I know we had some, there was some urgency with our ninth grade curriculum. Is there any urgency with regard to the changes that are being proposed in the K through fifth grade, I guess?
Could you be more specific about urgency?
We talked about the rollout. Is there, we have curriculum in place for them right now, so whereas we don't for our ninth graders, right?
We don't have curriculum in place right now.
They can use what they've always used.
Right, but it's not been an atlas, like, it's not, and it's not consistent, it's not throughout.
Well, what do we teach last, is there any reason we can't teach what we taught last year or this year?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, except for the ninth grade, which we've...
We don't even know all that. We don't know what every third grade in every building is teaching even doing to even know if we can...
Well, I mean, we could know that had we not been trying to force them to...
I mean, it's been two years. It's been two years.
Because there was, it was not for lack of desire to have it done. You know, when you're telling people they can't do work, they're not going to do the work, especially when they have certain threats over them.
My question was, you know, sometimes when you make a decision, you have to make a decision now. And there's, I'm not sensing that there's a now that has to be made on this. And if it's going to be done right, you'd think you'd want to take the time to roll it out appropriately.
There is a need for vertical and horizontal articulation in grades one through five, absolutely. And we had started that process with the committee and that was with administrators... No, this, the 22, 23.
No, two years ago.
Two years ago is when?
We rejected the pilot, so...
So do you feel comfortable that you could take what we were teaching last year? And I would agree that you want everything to be similar across the school district. You want every Pen Ridge student to have the same, you know, knowledge, experience, whatever. Would it be easier to get that aligned for this year while working on this, to roll this out next year?
Well, I never, I never do the thing that's easier, but I would do the thing that's right. And the thing that's right is giving the teachers more than a week to turn this around. I am honestly very nervous about that. And I don't, as a teacher, I'm sure that anyone would say, this is, third and fourth grade is a big change. And especially for third and fourth grade, they would need more time, in my opinion. So if that is something that's easier, I don't think, no, that's not easier. That's actually going to, you know, we're going to have to form committees and find time. It's actually harder, but it's the right way to do it and it's the way that we can ensure that it's it's the right thing for our students.
I didn't mean easier. Take the easy path, but better, yes.
Grade five?
Wait, I would like to pause there. And Dr. Barczyk, or Dr. Schott, if you want to speak on this, you can. Do you not, in your tenure, has it not been common practice where things are rolled out before the school year and for that year, instead of having an entire year?
In the sense of, a new curriculum?
I would say everyone in the room knows, I'm a public education teacher.
Right.
Literally, last week, I received an email from my supervisor saying that we are rolling out new ELA for our entire department. We haven't seen it. My first day of in-service is Wednesday. That's when we're meeting to discuss it. Along with that, we're rolling out new progress monitoring for our IEP students. Haven't seen it. To me, this has been common practice in my tenure. My sister teaches out in Lancaster, same for there. I started at that school district my teacher teaches at. It's always been that. In Maryland, when I lived in Maryland and was a teacher, always. A few years ago, we started an entire new IEP writing online, right before the beginning of the school year. So to say that that's something that you're nervous about, and to be fair, people have not been showing up at my district's school board meetings because it is common practice that you do get it. And what you do is, as administrators, as a district, as colleagues, you work together. We're not expecting perfect, but you work together, you have the support, you're going through it and then you get better and better as you go.
The one thing that we heard recently was that, you know, it's fine to get better and better as you go because you get a redo as a teacher, but our kids don't get a redo for that grade. The kids don't get a redo for that grade. If it's not done right, you can't...
And just because it's been done poorly in the past, doesn't mean that you continue to do it poorly. It's not poorly.
Well, you don't like that it was just rolled out for you, right? You would say the better option would be to have a longer runway.
No, when you're doing it in the summertime, you have the...
We have to, no, we have to...
The better option would have been for the administration to have written the curriculum over the last two years that they were supposed to be working on it. I'm sorry, but the big reason why we're even in this position is because this was supposed to be written and they kept dragging their feet and dragging their feet and not writing the curriculum. And then after two years, there was like unpacking of standards after hours and hours and hours over two years of not getting the curriculum done. So if we can't expect, if we can't expect the work to be done by our own employees, then...
Megan, that's not true and it's very unprofessional to disparage your business.
No, no, what's happening here is completely unprofessional, completely unprofessional.
No, we have never had, we have never had a situation where we have created an entirely new course and implemented it.
That is a lie.
No, it is not a lie. Second, IEP writing...
I'll get to my homework and I'll send you. I'll send you some data.
IEP writing is not the same as creating a fourth grade curriculum that is now going to introduce children to big ideas that we've never, that elementary teachers... I'm a secondary ed, so maybe I could walk into a fourth grade classroom real quick and figure out how to present that to fourth graders.
Why, you don't have that background as a teacher. The teachers do.
No, they have not been teaching students this, these concepts that you're trying to...
Just like it's the same if it's a new teacher coming and learning all curriculum. You're a professional. Just like it's the same if it's a new teacher coming and learning all curriculum. You, you're a professional. You have, yes.
Not in a week, Jordan. And just because.
And you're not learning the whole thing, you're taking it one unit at a time.
Just because something is common practice does not mean it's the best practice.
But it's funny how it just comes out now that, oh, we should need to change the common practice now.
That we never had these discussions. You think that people haven't been listening, or that I forget. I've been on the board for almost eight years. Don't tell me what has been common practice and what has not been common practice. Don't talk to me about two years ago. This is right now in this moment. This is not ready to have teachers do this next week.
Can you finish presenting the rest of the discussion?
Wait, I have one question. Jen, you said that it's not true that work wasn't being done for two years. So from the time we did not approve the pilot.
We have.
Let me finish a question. You can't really answer it unless you hear it. So for the 12 months from the time we turned it down, that you were curriculum chair, you said they were working. Can you update us on that? You never updated us at the board and told us what was happening.
I believe that we did have updates, and they were stopped from, no, no. They were set to get different resources. We brought, they brought something for the elementary school. We told them to do different things.
That was in January.
There was work trying to be done.
I'm asking you what happened in 12 months.
These people were doing work that was, they were told to stop doing work. Were you told to stop doing work? Yes, they were told to stop doing work. And I can tell you that I.
Two months ago when they were doing something completely different than what everybody was asked to do.
No. Megan, you guys have these teachers and supervisors and everyone else under threat of, you know, you had the supervisor pull them into a meeting and tell them that their jobs were going to be eliminated. To think that you have not been influencing them with threats of their jobs, it's, they said anyone doesn't go.
She's speaking openly and honestly. She just, she just spoke that she, like my other year, we're disagreeing.
Okay, I'm glad you think she's honest, because she said a couple of things, a few things. She said this isn't ready to be rolled out this year. She said that she was stopped from doing work. She said that she would do this differently. If you think she's honest, and you think she's competent, and you think that we should trust her word, then this should not be voted on to be included.
Well, it's kind of, and then the things that were being actually not being delivered at the same time, yes.
In fifth grade, students will learn about a divided America. That's the name, that's the title. The Fifty States and a review of the geography and landscapes of different regions of the United States. And then moving on to trades and enterprise unique to certain geographies, the causes of the War of 1812, and turning points and effects of the War of 1812. Unit two, westward expansion and slavery. The content there is the ways that the purchase of land and new forms of transportation contributed to westward expansion, the reasons why people immigrated to America in the early 1800s, technological advances of America, the effects of American westward expansion on Native Americans, and the Indian Removal Act, manifest destiny, et cetera, the life of African Americans held in slavery, the reasons why slavery and racism are immoral and unjust, what were the differences between the northern states and the southern states, the ways enslaved persons resisted slavery or escaped to freedom, and the ways abolitionists worked to abolish slavery. Unit three is called the Civil War and Reconstruction. Content, the reasons Abraham Lincoln believed slavery was dividing, dividing America, the reasons Abraham Lincoln believed America's principles would justify abolishing slavery, the causes of the Civil War, the important generals and leaders and battles of the Civil War, the reasons why Abraham Lincoln's leadership was important in the war, the ways most northerners and southerners viewed each other following the Civil War, the civil rights guaranteed through the Reconstruction Amendments and other laws, and the resistance to and reversal of these achievements during and after Reconstruction. And I'd like to add that these, what these units that we just talked about, from first to fifth grade are vertically articulated, which is good. But I'm concerned about the fourth graders going into fifth grade and the third graders going into fourth grade not having had this prior knowledge. So a fifth grade teacher's going to start right away with the Civil War, and the students may not have the background for that. So that's a difficult part of developing their lesson plans.
So how would you implement that, roll it out? How would you roll it out so that it would be in proper?
I would have to speak with the teachers. I've had concerns about this all along.
Well, I haven't heard any of them.
I spoke with Jordan Adams about them, because that's who I was working with.
And then with regards to the same question.
So are you trying to think that he wasn't compromising with working together, or do you feel like he said no to your concerns?
He didn't say no.
What, what was the, is there a major difference in this curriculum that needs to be changed for our teachers as well, or is this just nuanced a little bit?
Some of it is similar. They did a lot of exploration in fifth grade, too, the revolution, not so much the emphasis on Abraham Lincoln. But there, there are similarities, and there are ways that it can be adjusted, and, but I, again, the incoming students to the beginning of the year getting that sort of smoothed over and the wrinkles ironed out might take a while.
I think we have been hearing concerns from teachers, from parents, from supervisors all along. For you guys to sit here and say, no one has ever presented concerns to you.
No, specific. It feels like, again, that games are being played, which.
No, games aren't, the only games that are being played is that people are having.
In agenda setting, in, in agenda setting, she said that they worked well together, that they collaborated, that it was ready to go, and did not share any. All these concerns are brand new.
What's the difference if you're saying it here or that? Like, what's the difference? There's no.
Because she has the benefit of the public hearing it, where her words can't be.
But there's no difference, there's no difference.
It is. This offers people more protection. They're safer here in telling us what's really going on, because we need to know what has really been going on.
Through a Zoom, it would be way, like, no.
No, this is much safer.
They thought they were going to lose their jobs.
But again, if that's the fear, what would be the difference of saying it in public versus private? I'm just saying, if there would be.
Supervisor's decision had nothing to do with Vermillion. It had to do with whether or not we should be putting more teaching assistants instead of more supervision teachers. Because we were specifically told that supervisors don't write curriculum.
That's not true.
Yes, we were. Yes, that is exactly what we were told.
Should I move on to ninth grade, Dr. Shad?
You're lying.
Are we finished with elementary? Dr. Barcheck?
Yes.
You want to move on? So Mrs. Vitale worked with Mr. Adams on ninth grade curriculum. They did have exchange of ideas. We have been through this with ninth grade. There are units at the beginning, I think it's the first three units.
No, the last two.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Jenna.
No, that's okay. I shouldn't have interrupted you.
No, that's all right. Where Mrs. Vitale and Mr. Adams collaborated on the work. And I know that Mrs. Vitale will be talking about those first three units, correct?
Yes.
So if there's any questions, they would come later. But go through them, Jenna, and we'll see where we are.
So I wrote the economics unit, which is what Dr. Obarchek has on the screen. It's out of, it's two separate documents, because I did mine in Atlas, and we, Mr. Adams and I worked from his Word document for the first three units, so that's why they're on different formats. So we, I used the state standards for economics. And the content for the, the unit is how resources have an impact on the production of goods and services, conflict and cooperation among groups and organizations, our nation's, our national economy and how it's affected by the flow of goods and services, supply of demand and affect, how that affects the prices of goods and services, the phases of the economy, expansion, recession, depression, economic systems, market, capitalism, traditional, et cetera, taxation policies from local, state, and national governments, policies often limited, how they limit international trade, and economic conflict and cooperation among groups that's impacted the growth and development of the United States. Questions about the economics unit?
Anything changed in this unit?
There was no economics unit in ninth grade previous to this.
So anything changed from what you proposed to what you proposed in collaboration with Mr. Adams?
No, he suggested a few Word changes, some edits and revisions.
And you found it acceptable, okay?
Yes, I agreed. We did work well together. We were very amicable. Unit one for ninth grade civics, government, and economics, which is the new course in ninth grade. It's called America's Founding Ideas. The meaning of all men are created equal, the Declaration of Independence, relationship between just, a just government and the consent of the governed, the role education has in cultivating a citizen, the ways in which the founding generation promoted learning, freedom of religion and speech, the relationship between free self-government, private property, and industriousness, and the foreign policy principles held by different founders, especially those of George Washington, the main themes in George Washington's Farewell Address. So that's a spiral of what they did in elementary schools should be familiar to them, and the sources and risks of partisanship and factions. I'll just do the whole thing, and then if you have questions. Unit two, the United States Constitution. The content is the federal's arguments for a written constitution, the reasons why the founders believed union would secure rights while federalism would ensure competition among governments, the meaning of the separation of powers and its role in avoiding a concentration of power, the makeup roles and responsibilities of Congress and the legislative power, the makeup roles and responsibilities of the presidency and the executive power, the makeup roles and responsibilities of the judiciary and the judicial power, the reason for the Bill of Rights, the historical concerns with enumerating some but not all actions which government is prohibited from taking, and the meanings and importance of different rights guaranteed in the Bill of Rights. Unit three is called Equality and Civil Rights. The content there, principle that all men are created equal was an unprecedented basis for a country and one to which Americans and people around the world would appeal against injustice and discrimination. Slavery was a dehumanizing and immoral practice that contradicted America's founding ideas. Figures such as Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln appealed to the Declaration of Independence and Constitution. The Civil War was fought principally over the issue of slavery and resulted in its abolition. Reconstruction witnessed advances for the cause of equality. The century of discrimination that followed the Civil War and Reconstruction was answered by the Civil Rights Movement, and figures such as Martin Luther King Jr. appealed to the Declaration of Independence as justification for ending discrimination. Unit four, the progressive movement. The content is the progressive and founding views of human nature, the progressive, progressive views of ideas such as natural rights, equality, and consent of the governed, the reasons why progressives argued that greater government activity would be necessary, the ways in which progressives believed the Constitution was not conducive to greater government action, the reason why progressives were less concerned than the founders about the potential abuse of power by a government, and the different scopes of power the progressives envisioned for the executive and legislative branches. The next unit is institutions and policies in America, and this is one that I did not write.
Who wrote?
Mr. Adams.
But you were open to giving recommendations, edits, revisements. Like, it wasn't that, to be clear, it wasn't that we said, you write this, you write this, you write this grade, you write this grade. That was something that you guys discussed yourselves.
This unit, I, I told Mr. Adams that I did not agree with this unit, and then we needed to incorporate history so that the students weren't missing a large chunk of history, and he told me that there was to be no history put in this course. If you recall, we, we had conversations about how there wasn't a government, economics, and civics course. So this was supposed to be a government, economics, and civics course. That's what was tasked. And again, that's not what was done, and the reason we're here at the last minute is because you didn't do it. The problem is, if that is not accurate, I do have to say something there.
What Mrs. Vitale was doing, it was slightly tougher to let me decide that it would be written. The first three units are units that the teachers would have taught pretty much anyway, and they were written, and they are fine, the right, the way they go, and it's a good course. It got difficult on the last two units, where perception or understanding or misunderstanding that we could infuse history in the last two units to bring it together so a chunk of history isn't missing from the eighth grade to 10th grade. There was some misunderstanding there, where Jenna and I had a conversation about, because we're moving to block and so on and so forth, take a look at those units and maybe make some changes there. But that we were comfortable with the first three units. But it isn't because Jenna or anybody wasn't writing the curriculum. It just takes a while to do that. And there has been multiple calls with Mr. Adams, and they have been working together. But we are where we are, and we're really comfortable with these first three units. And, you know, Jenna and I have had these discussions. Ultimately, everybody here wants to have good, sound courses for our students. And if we really are ready to go, just as in the RILA courses, we don't have everything finished in RILA. It's not finished yet. But there's enough quality to get the year started, and teachers can teach that. The same exists for this social studies course. We can move forward with this social studies course in ninth grade and start the units. Figure it out. It is, it won't be rushed. These are fully developed courses. Mrs. Vitale then can work with the teachers to kind of figure out those last two units. And I think that we would be, and it is in the best interest of students at the high school to start the course. We do not have time to go back, nor, and I would say, if we had to, I would say that. But I do not believe that. These first three units, as Mrs. Vitale will tell you, are appropriate and prepared, I mean, developed enough for teachers to be able to get started. Is that accurate?
Yes.
So I don't want to go down a rabbit hole of who didn't write curriculum, when I know that the supervisors have been writing curriculum all along. But I do want to say that we do need some time for those last two units. We're happy to get those done. But let's start with this curriculum and move forward for our ninth grade students, is what I'm asking.
But what is the feedback from the teachers who will be teaching?
They just got it today, so I haven't gotten much feedback from them.
Like, there are teachers here, so if we could hear from them and hear what their feedback is right now. I mean, I understand what you're saying, Dr. Shad. We're supposed to have, I still feel really uncomfortable that I'm finding out tonight that Jordan Adams was reviewing curriculum, when in fact he was not to be writing curriculum. That was the promise. That was what we were said.
That was not the promise. In the contract, it's, we do recommend these recommendations for the curriculum.
Review and recommend is not right.
If that's, that's your opinion, but that's not that. It is. You can't say that he wasn't going to be writing curriculum or giving recommendations for the curriculum.
At the June curriculum meeting, when he was with us on Zoom, he said he does not and was not going to be.
No, he did not. He did not say he was not going to be writing curriculum. He answered John's questions compared to the supervisor question. But then we also mentioned that the supervisors were going to be collaborating with Vermillion, Mr. Adams, to be writing the curriculum. We even said that in the meeting.
No, he said that he was going to only give recommendations because he is not qualified to write curriculum. He does not have any experience with the Pennsylvania state standards for social studies.
No, he's very well aware of it.
No, that's, it's not interpretation of the word. It's not my interpretation of what the word right means. I'm an educated person. I know what the word right means, and I know what the word consult means. I know what the word suggest means. If you're telling me that he wrote something that's very different from what was told to me a couple of months ago. So I have a big problem with that. And I do want to hear from the teacher. ago. So I have a big problem with that, and I do want to hear from the teachers, their feedback, whether or not they're going to be able to do this a week from now. We are supposed to have, by our norms, I know that we decided to skip having our board required, or our policy required board retreat where we come up with our norms, but the last time we had a board retreat, the norm that we came up for curriculum development was that it would be like policy where we would see it for two months before it would be voted on. So at the very least, I think that we should hear from the teachers.
Mrs. Cullen, we have a public comment period right after this.
These are not members of the public. These are our employees, and the people that you are supposed to see. Megan, we have.
Dr. Scheid.
No, Megan, whenever we have curriculum meetings, I can't remember a curriculum meeting, where we had new curriculum, brand new curriculum being presented, that we did not have an assortment of teachers there to speak.
I can't.
They're all on recordings. We have routinely had teachers speak.
I mean, we just had Mr. Vogel presenting math with no teacher by him just a couple months ago, so that is inaccurate.
No, when teachers come before us to present new courses, we have them come and give their opinion.
It was the new sports course. There was no teacher there. It was Mr. Vogel. That's inaccurate.
No, Mr. Minjona came to talk to us about his military fitness course.
You said you can't remember time. I'm pointing to a time.
Oh, my gosh. So, but why don't you want to hear the members with bigger questions?
No, no, that's fine. That's fine.
It doesn't seem. It doesn't seem, no.
As long as you speak in those moments, that's fine.
Why can't they be part of the discussion about what they're supposed to be teaching? The resistance is really bizarre.
I'm not going to turn this into an hour long.
You're right, there is resistance.
Last week, or whenever we were together last, there was this big statement about how much you respect and want the best for the teachers, and now you're fighting having teachers come and speak during a curriculum meeting.
We're saying, let them finish their presentation, and then.
This is part of the presentation. This is feedback on it.
That's not how presentations have ever gone. Just let Miss Vitale finish.
She did.
She did.
I believe you are.
Oh, are you finished?
Right with the presentation.
Okay, so then we are onto public comments. That's fine. They can go first.
They can go first.
Do they sign up in the sheet? Does she have the sheet?
No, I don't have the sheet.
They can, go ahead, let them sign up. You're supposed to sign, you're supposed to sign up during the meeting till the end of the meeting, so if you can just quick sign up. They're up here. I'm saying you five, sign up, but we're not circulating it around the whole room. The whole point is you sign up up until the end of the public comment period. We're letting all of you sign up, but this isn't turning into the whole room now signing up at the end of the meeting. That's not how it works.
This is a part of a response to a presentation. This is feedback.
Mrs. Cullen, you're not chairing this meeting.
I don't care if I'm the chair or not. It's proper procedure for anyone that says you're chairman.
Okay, so that would be the audience would need to maintain some decorum. It's on the public comment. Hang on.
Mr. Cozen, if you want to start, that would be fine. If you want to start for the second one.
Hang on, Jordan. Hang on one second.
In order.
Hang on one second.
Okay, then we'll start in order. The first one up is Kevin Foster. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't hear that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Ron was going to say.
He's now bringing the whole sign up sheet around the whole room. The teachers are not the whole room.
Okay, I just kind of wanted to sum up. I've been listening to this meeting for a while now, and it appears that we're rushing something through that certainly is public is against it. It's disappointing to see three people continue to support it, even though the teachers and are against this. The community is against this. We were elected to honestly serve the people of the community, and we're not doing that now. We're rushing something through that's not ready. We've heard it from the teachers, with the exception of Dr. Scheid. Everybody else seems to be against that, and what I'd really like to hear from before we vote on this next week is what Dave and Bob have to say about this, because I didn't hear anything all night from them. Obviously clear, three of them are in support of it, but I'd certainly like to hear from you guys before the public comment.
No, and I've already heard from Mr. Forman.
No, not you, Jordan. I'd like to hear from Bob. I'd like to hear from Dave. What's your view on this stuff? Speak to the public. You were elected to represent the public. Let them know. Thank you.
Okay, public comment for second comment, Kevin Foster, and then on deck is Stephanie Regina.
Well, they don't want to go first, and they took the sign up sheet to have the whole room sign up. When they said that we were just add teachers, side teachers.
They said that they wanted to go in order, that they could speak.
Please return the sign up sheet up here.
They were so dismissive. It's incredible.
It's always easy to point somebody else's flaws, but not your own. Like, it's just fascinating.
They don't follow any rules.
Kevin Foster, Hilltown Township. What a circus, an absolute circus. While this school board calls each other liars, shouts at each other, attacks our admin and teachers, thousands of children's curriculum is in a complete state of flux with school starting a week from today. Tonight, we heard that the board has been putting their political fingers all over our students' curriculum, attempting to force teachers to teach curriculum that they and their political allies have chosen for our kids, cutting out our teachers in admin. You've heard time and time again tonight, Mrs. Blomgren attempting to look at Ms. Vitale and ask if she was receptive to changes from Mr. Adams. As a reminder, Jenna Vitale's job was up for termination only a few weeks ago. Appreciate the respect, guys. Appreciate the respect. A reminder of Jordan Adams' direct quote in reference to Jenna Vitale's job being up for termination, including Mrs. Ravers. I'm going to read it back. The key here, and this is from Mr. Adams, who is writing our curriculum, the key here, and I got this idea from a board that was doing this, is that it means admin need to be put on notice that they will need to cooperate with all of this. I heard a question in the first public comment section. I'd like to reiterate it. Have any of you received or been promised financial kickbacks by Vermillion, Hillsdale, or anyone outside of the Penrich School District?
No. I mean, I know you probably don't believe me, but I don't have to answer, but no.
Anybody else?
I have a job.
A few of you will be leaving the board at the conclusion of this year, as you are not running for reelection. Has Jordan Adams or Vermillion promised any of you future employment?
No. I know. Why am I answering? I don't know. It's just too crazy, but no.
Mrs. Vanas-Clynes, has Jordan Adams or Vermillion promised you future employment?
You're ridiculous. This is public comment period. I'm not going to engage with you.
Mrs. Blomgren.
Talk about respect. You're disrespectful.
I know. I shouldn't have.
That concludes my public comment.
Thank you. Okay, on deck after Stephanie Regina is Jane Foster. It says again, but I'm thinking it's Jane Kramer.
Yes.
Okay.
My mistake. I was trying to help her. My brain's a little tired.
Okay, then, sorry, real quick, because she's passing. On deck is Ross McLennan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Stephanie Regina, East Rock Hill. First, I just want to say, I feel ridiculous standing here speaking before the teachers. I feel like I would much have preferred to hear from them first, and that might have informed my comment as well. There are a few things I need to add. So I'm sure there are some occasional new rollouts elsewhere, Satterton, Lancaster, whatever. I hope that when they do that, they already have an understanding of definitions of words like framework and requirement. To address slavery a little bit here, sometimes people don't listen to what's being said. Our issue, our concern about the way slavery is handled isn't how many times it's mentioned. It isn't simply just saying it was wrong. It's understanding how rhetoric can be used to send an implicit message. And somebody used the example of how if we use something like slavery was healthy enough to flourish somewhere, that's positive rhetoric surrounding a human atrocity. And that's what I trust our teachers not to do, but somehow you don't trust our teachers, because if, it's been said more than once that many of these units are being taught anyway, so if they're being taught anyway, why didn't you trust them enough in the first place to not do this unless it's because you want that implicit rhetoric that glorifies darker parts of our history? That's our concern, not how many times slavery is mentioned. We never said that you don't mention slavery. Never said that. Okay, and, oh, I wanted to clarify the communism thing. I got that from, I downloaded the Hillsdale curriculum, and that was in the three to five curriculum in Hillsdale. So, one, again, it's that implicit messaging. It's an interpret, that whole thing, if you read it, it's still prose heavy. It looks like somebody's college dissertation. Like, it's very much leaning in one, they're still in love with what they're saying if you read it. And so then, connecting to that, now we've got this Genestown thing in the curriculum, and it does say in our unit, something about Genestown experiments, and that's how the communism thing came up. It was that it was a communist experiment, so I'm curious now what those experiments are. And again, like, no one's had time to review this curriculum and find out what that means. I have a fifth grader, I have a child starting fifth grade, my middle child's starting fifth grade, now I'm kind of like, you know, this, we're also talking about the transition. I will stop. Have a good night.
Okay, Ross, and then Matt Carbonaro is on deck.
Ross McLennan, Hilltown. Personally, I would like to hear from the teachers. I agree with Joan on this one.
Sorry. I'm just getting organized. I was hearing you.
Ross, it's your public comment. Earlier, when this young lady stood up for three minutes, why would you shut her up? This is, that's your product. That's what we stand here for. That's what you should stand for, right there, that young lady. It's not the first time this board and solicitors have shut up your customer right there. I'd get fired, and other people have talked about that. You don't treat your customers that way. I have zero respect for you, lady. You suck tonight.
Okay, so then it goes to Leah Rash is up, and on deck is Stephen Rash.
Leah Rash, Hilltown Township. This is bad, but again, I'm going to speak to the transparency. I don't know why board members had to ask, like, tell us what's different, what was removed, why, in every other policy, things like that. You see what's been redlined. You see what's been added. On some of the curriculum documents, when you look at the properties, Jordan Adams is the author of the document properties, just so you know, but he wasn't writing it. Was there an option for the curriculum supervisors to reject all of Jordan Adams' recommendations? Would you guys have been okay with that? Like, if they went through it, because that's what I think the overlay was, if they went through Hillsdale, and they're like, well, we're already teaching a lot of these things in a much better way, and you didn't like that, so now they were forced to work with Vermillion. What if, depending on however you end up defining required, if some of these Hillsdale lessons are actually just there, if the teachers want to use them, what is the consequence if they don't use them? So, something to think about. All of you should seriously look through these specific lessons. Again, I don't have the textbooks, but I have the lessons. The wording is not neutral. It is not a neutral classroom you are creating at all. It leads to ideas that, like, Martin Luther King was like a good civil rights activist because he was quoting the founders, but others were bad, especially when they started talking about equity. Again, the definition is incorrect, and that leads, leading statements that anything that's affirmative action was bad for our country. Like, read it. Read these lesson plans. They're really bad and very slandered. So again, I agree. Like, we should be able to find something that works for Penrich, but I'm not surprised, because there was not a single example of bias in our curriculum that you guys were ever able to produce. You just made blanket statements around things without providing the context. So again, white fragility in the literature class that you guys were all upset about, it was an excerpt when they were talking about To Kill a Mockingbird, a book about if a black man can get a fair trial unless they read itself. I'd say that there's probably some good explanations in that book that helped the students understand what life was like back then. They weren't like, read the whole book, white fragility, but you guys said you were fine with just that misinformation for the community. You were totally okay with it, and that's terrible leadership. You should be providing context. You should be setting the record straight. You should be helping people understand what's happening. Then, racial injustice in the math class was a statistics class where they watched a video from 60 Minutes where they talked about how they used data to show the water problems in Detroit were racially and socioeconomically aligned. Very appropriate example.
On deck, Laura Foster.
So that's the second book you've ruined for me by talking about it here. First of all, thank you, curriculum coordinators. You did such a great job. You really do. I want to thank this job you have. You need like hazard pay or something for getting up here. Wow, no wonder no one wants to work here. No wonder we have so many openings with the dysfunction up here. You guys need to be embarrassed. You really should be. So, I know we stopped at ninth grade. I'll plead ignorance. Did we go, did Mr. Adams go forward past ninth grade? I'm not sure. Will students be prepared for AP exams, and will the history that he teaches line up with the AP exams themselves? Questions I think need to be looked at. Otherwise, our AP scores are going to really go down. So what kind of bill has he racked up at this point? Does anyone have a figure? No?
It's been about $6,000 a month, $6,500 a month. I think it's three, but it's definitely two.
Okay, I'll email you then, and you can get back to me on that? Awesome. No, he's going to get back to me. We're good. We're good. Is it?
Yeah, the bills listed are every one.
Awesome. So, I do want to say, though, Mr. Adams seems to have a deep passion for social studies, especially. I think that's really important, you know, being an American, to have that passion. So I do have a question. You are not obligated to answer. Did he suggest a fourth credit of social studies for Penrich? Just wanted to ask that, since we knocked it down to three. That's it. Thank you again to the teachers out here.
On deck is David O'Donnell.
Laura Foster, East Rock Hill. So, there's so much to unpack with this, right? I mean, first and foremost, this is absurd that I am up here taking this time when the teachers who know what they are talking about, who actually have the education and degrees. degrees in social studies, are sitting there waiting to provide comment on a curriculum that they are supposed to teach, and you fight that. Because of what? Because you're scared? You're scared of what they're going to say? Have you gone through the curriculum? Have you fact-checked it?
Yes.
I'm guessing not, because I don't know where they would find their facts from. Because they're going to pull out from, you know, these places, they're talking about, like, for first grade, things like core knowledge, everyone should go home and Google core knowledge. See what this is, see what this overlay, what this foundation is going to be for first grade? The problem isn't about 1776 Unites per se, it's about that this, these were all sources that were recommended by our board to provide the foundation for the education of our children. Every single one of them is an alt-right conservative think tank, every single one. Go and do your research, and you know what, if not, you can go to ridgenetwork.org and we will provide that information for you. These, you can't ask these guys why, there is no reason why. You can't ask them for evidence, or understanding, or science, because none of these, they're answering questions in a completely different paradigm than what logic and reason and science and vetted research supports. They're based on being the next, like Moms for Liberty poster child. They're looking at Steve Bridget Diggler, that's what they want. The only reason that I have my children in this school is because of you. The only reason that I have my children in this school is because of the teachers.
That's right.
There is no way that if this wasn't for you guys, that I would let any of my children sit behind the made-up data, the made-up lies, everything that they are putting out there that is blatantly untrue. No way, and I can guarantee you that most parents in this district feel this way. Who's up here speaking against it? People running for school board, that aren't, you know, really understanding what it means to talk about slavery. If I say the word slavery, does that mean it's addressed? I don't know, I guess so. Maybe that's, maybe that's what I'm going to put up on my, my next campaign little platform, is I talked about injustice, it's addressed, I said the word, that means that it's addressed. No, maybe not. Thank you to the teachers!
Okay, on deck is April Foltz.
So I just want to start by saying, thank you to our supervisor, you guys, I know you're put in an impossible situation. I would not dream of putting any of my employees into that, and we got, like, we understand, we love every part of what you're doing, thank you. And the reason why they're not honest to you is because you don't invite honesty. You don't. Even up here, every single time, every time they want to try to converse with you, to ask very basic questions, all you do is fight. I'm right, no, I'm right, I know exactly what I'm doing, you need to trust me, you haven't reserved the buy-in of anybody at this point. That is why you need to hold. Because if you can't get buy-in for stuff, you're not leading anybody, you're forcing people. That's the difference. You aren't giving the opportunity to pilot anything, you're not giving the opportunity to roll things out, they are doing their darndest to try to make this work from the changes you have made, without any consultation whatsoever. You absolutely admitted the fact that you didn't consult any of them on any of these changes, you just, no, get the work done. This is what we want, you get it done. Not what they think is right, not what they think is competitive. They are the ones that are implementing it, they are on the ground, they are the ones who know what's going on, and if you want to make it more rigorous, ask for that. How can we do that? But you're not asking questions, you're imposing will. That's not acceptable. Again, that is not leadership, that is not what you are elected to do, you're elected to lead, which means you have to listen, you have to absorb, you have to gather all the information. That is not this. This is just like, you know what, let's just get it done. I have a child going into ninth grade, and thank you so much for saying that we can get those first three units going, I, I agreed with it, I like where you guys are going. And the fact that you guys can still work on the rest, cool. That, that gives me at least a little bit less anxiety of a new student going into high school. It's already anxiety-driven enough, and you're creating more for us. Stop, it's unnecessary. This should not be this complicated, you're making it that much.
On deck is Josh Hogan.
April Foltz, West Rock Hill. Planned to say some different things, but shifted it a little bit after that discussion. So I plan to talk a little bit more about the details of the curriculum, but I think my focus, once, I wanted to be now that, really the idea that policy 109, right instructional materials, we debated meeting after meeting over this policy, that it requires your own policy, that instructional materials represent a balanced diversity of viewpoints and present information in a relevant, accurate, and objective manner. So I think it's become pretty clear that Mr. Adams' Hillsdale curriculum recommendations, recommendations violate policy 109. It paints the founders as essentially flawless, while asserting that progressivism in the 20th century was a rejection of the principles of the Declaration of Independence. While the curriculum does not shy away from the topic of slavery, mentions it many, many times, it's almost exclusively in the context of why these slave-owning founders were really actually abolitionists, who thought it would resolve itself organically, that's a quote. It's littered with references to how the founders envisioned full equality for all in the Declaration of Independence, despite vast historical evidence to the contrary. It actually positions slavery as an unfortunate, quote, "compromise" that the founders had to make, even going so far as to blame the invention of the cotton gin for taking slavery off its, quote, "natural path to extinction." With respect to the civil rights movement, it suggests that desegregation laws violated constitutional rights of individuals, and the private schools and businesses should have the right to refuse service or admission, based on their personal biases, despite laws to protect equal rights. It uses Dr. King's "I have a dream" speech as a mere prop to praise the wisdom of the founders. It provides a one-sided view of seminal court cases like Roe v. Wade or Griswold versus Connecticut, going so far as to suggest that women's rights granted in these cases represent a, quote, "moral shift from America's founding principles." This curriculum is not ready, it's not right, and if you had any regard at all for the quality of our kids' education, you would vote no immediately. Thank you.
On deck is Stacy, oh, sorry, on deck is Adam Benzer.
Josh Hogan, West Rock Hill. Not what I expected tonight, not what I expected to do tonight, but I think it's time. Let's start by addressing that the only person in this room who knew how that was going to go was Gemma Vitale. The only person. Unless there was malfeasance going on, which I'm going to give people the benefit of the doubt, nobody else knew what was going to happen. When you zoom out 50,000-foot view and look at public education, I want you to consider, if you're watching this at home, just consider to try to move the needle in public education, what is happening here tonight? You had an administrator openly launch an ambush on their board, after weeks of speaking and communicating with their board. All of these concerns could have been brought up. I think the only fair thing to do right now is to give Jordan Adams an opportunity to respond to the public with every single line item of his recommendations that he provided, release every piece of that. We're at a point where I think that we're potentially harming him professionally, and that's very unfair for him, as a district. We refrain. Again, 50,000-foot view, when I look at how hard it is to move the needle in public education, make any improvement in removing bias, doing all, think about how many months it took to work through COVID, that, a lot of you were a part of that, fighting to get kids back in school, we had kids hurt because they were kept out of school, and it was such an easy thing, but it took such a fight. Here we are again, yet another thing. And here's what I wasn't expecting to do tonight, when I look from that 50,000-foot view of what just happened and the ambush that happened to you guys, I am with you, I'm with you 100%, I don't care anymore whether it loses me votes, I don't care about the election coming up, I care that public education has a bias. Public education does not put the students first, there are competing interests in every aspect of it. And I respect what you guys are trying to do, we need to find ways to move forward from here, this is obviously an awful situation, some options for compromise that I'm going to throw out there. Removing the designation of required and optional for the resources seems like a decent idea, I understand exactly why you guys wanted that in there, but there's one starting point that seems pretty easy. Passing K through V next year, let's go ahead and put that to the next year because they won't be affected by block, so pass the curriculum so that it's in place, but push for its implementation the following year. And ninth grade now, I really appreciate it, Dr. Schei, the attempt to throw some oil on the troubled waters and address ninth grade this year, starting with the first three units. Again, simple compromise, we can at least move forward. Let's revisit the structure of this contract, again, I'm more worried about the fact that we as a district are harming a contractor. He, I'm sure, I'm a contractor in my professional life, I prefer fixed fee contracts, there are clearly things that he needs to work on, based on what we've heard tonight, to continue. If you want to continue that relationship, then give him a fixed fee for that work over a set amount of time, that way we can move forward and not have that open-ended contract. End of the day, I know that this is putting me in a bad position, but I'm really tired of seeing what's happening to you guys, it's so unfair, it's unfortunate, I know where your heart is, there are ways to do this better, and I'm frustrated that I'm put in a situation by your actions, where I have to say this and hurt myself, but I'm with you, I'm with you, I understand what you're trying to do, and that's what I want to do as well.
Always promised about respect. Okay, on deck, Stacy Smith.
Adam Benzer, East Rock Hill, this is two in a row that I've had to follow some craziness. I have never thought I'd hear words from a candidate say they care more about the contracts Okay, okay, well, anyway. So over the previous months, I've heard a lot of comments from the public, and I'm honestly really sick of hearing that we're trying to, I don't know, that they're not sincere, I've heard it from Ms. Blongren multiple times, I've heard it from people running for school board, and I'm sick of it, because, like, you guys put us in this position, you're the ones who, we got, like, our kids are in school, we got their, like, what they're going to be learning, like, we care about what they're going to be learning. We got what they're going to be learning three days ago, and you didn't even, I mean, it was a half-assed agenda. And, like, you're telling us that, that, like, this stuff's on there, so we expect that our kids are going to be learning it, but you're saying now, well, it's only recommended or whatever. It's just all done in such, like, a ramshackle way, and you wonder why people are upset, you wonder why people are here telling you they don't agree with what, it's because you guys, there's, like, no leadership here, and if we, you've seen from the previous comment, it's going to be more of the same if the people who, I don't want to make this about politics, it's not about politics, it's about our kids, and it's going to be more of the same if we choose to go the path of the way it's been done. And I just hope that we can put the kids first and maybe not worry so much about the contractors, worry so much about the money, it's just ridiculous, it's, I mean, it, it's ridiculous. And one more thing, if, in the, in transparency and giving everybody the most information, I was curious why the school network blocks the supporterschools.com letter to school board. It's about Jordan Adams' history, it's weird that it's blocked on this network, I don't understand why, it would be, and there's also another Jordan Adams explainer that is blocked from wonderingeagle.wordpress.com, there's a long pearl, but I'm wondering why you guys, what are you afraid of? Why would you block that? Sure you know. Thank you.
Okay, on deck after Stacy Smith is Bob Cozeno.
Okay, so I'll be brief because I really want them to speak, just a couple of thoughts from the presentation. I feel a lot better after hearing the supervisor speak and knowing that this is not necessarily required. I think that that really needs to be better defined on the draft curriculum before we vote on this and make it official, because having the word "required," I mean, naturally we all looked at that and thought, the teachers are going to have to stand up there and read from these lesson plans, and that was going to be a required thing. If that's not what you mean, then don't put it on there. And I have a really big concern, my daughter's going into fourth grade this year, so I'm concerned about the fact that she hasn't learned any of the stuff that she would have learned the previous year with this new curriculum, so, like the supervisor said, it's, you know, they have to figure out how to prepare them for that, so, you know, maybe putting this off another year would give them some time to really think about how to fill those gaps and better prepare them for the incoming year, next year, maybe they could filter some of it in to prepare them this year, so that they can be ready to do it next year. And lastly, I really would like information on how to opt my child out of anything Hillsdale, 1776 Unites, PragerU, which I'm sure is coming soon, and I just don't want her involved in any of that, so, that's all.
Mr. Cozeno, I'm sorry, I need to pause for a second. Amy Johnson, I missed you from speaking, so, would you like to come up now, or you want to go after the teachers? I apologize for missing you from the first comment. So you want to come, and then, okay.
President Rice, do you mind if we switch our order? There we go. All right, I'm also for the board members that care about our boys, I'm going to hand out some of the resources that we created here, since we don't have a slideshow and can't present that. Also, if you don't mind, we might go a couple seconds over, three minutes, to present our
Hello, I am Lisa Russell, and I have taught at Penridge High School for 18 years, and for the last seven years, I have taught early American history to all levels of ninth-grade students, in my honors academic, and in my co-taught classes with a special education teacher. My main concern with this proposed curriculum is the lack of time that has been provided for teachers to properly implement and deliver the required lessons so that we can differentiate it for all learners. With only being given this curriculum a week before school begins, we have not had any time to plan through the units with lessons that will allow us to teach with the big picture in mind. As a teacher, my goal every day is for students to know why they are learning content, how it's going to be assessed, and what skills they can work on to be successful. Without being given time to create these lessons that are beyond the Hillsdale-required ones, that have each of my students in mind, it will be difficult to achieve these goals. In addition, I'm concerned that the approval that's up for this curriculum removes a large percentage of 19th century history from the high school at Penridge. Students will have ended eighth grade having learned about the founding documents of the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution, and then they're going to pick up learning about the 20th century in 10th grade, with everything missing in between. This means that all high school students moving forward will not learn about the major events of the 1800s, it will leave a gap in their understanding before beginning the next required course. Some examples of specific content that has been removed are: America's westward expansion, which includes Native Americans' experiences and perspective; the antebellum period, which includes political and economic developments, as well as experiences of enslaved people living in America prior to the Civil War; the major events of the Civil War, industrialization, the Gilded Age; the importance of 19th century political and societal figures; the market revolution; and American imperialism. As social studies teachers, we feel that learning about the history of the 19th century is critical to understanding the development of our country's political is critical to understanding the development of our country's political, economical, and societal institutions, not just for the sequence of those social studies courses, but also as citizens of our country. I'm asking that you consider the various needs of the 120-plus students that will be in my class this year, and understand that we wanna do what is best for each of them. We want our lessons to be differentiated for their needs. We don't want to have to follow what's written and is required. We need time to work on this curriculum to ensure that we are successful with teaching so that they can be successful with learning. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kelly Angeli, and I'm a 9th and 10th grade social studies teacher at the high school. This is my 20th year teaching and my 19th year here at Penridge. I have taught many different social studies courses that we offer, and after looking over the proposed curriculum that is being presented here tonight, I'm requesting that the board consider giving us more time before implementing this newly proposed course. In less than a week's time, I will have 9th graders sitting in front of me. I take great time and great care when creating my lessons so that I can best engage the students in my classroom. Since the proposed curriculum was posted, I have taken as much time as I can to look through the Hillsdale curriculum that is listed. It is a 3,268-page document that's really not easy to navigate. My concern is also one that is mentioned tonight, that the Hillsdale lessons are listed in the proposed curriculum as required lessons. Requiring specific lesson plans removes the professional judgment of the teacher to develop lessons appropriate for the students sitting in front of us day to day and year to year. We haven't been given the time to preview these lessons before the start of the school year on Monday. Additionally, I noticed that content overlaps with the current 8th grade and 10th grade-approved courses and the proposed 4th and 5th grade courses that were mentioned tonight, and I think it's in the best interest of our students for us to take more time to meet with the other grade levels so that we aren't reteaching content in our scope and sequence. I truly hope you will consider delaying the implementation of this course. I think that the Penridge 9th graders deserve that courtesy. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bob Cousnoe, Penridge social studies teacher. Several social studies teachers participated in providing the feedback that we wanted to present tonight on the proposed 9th grade course. Unfortunately, we have had only a few hours of review of the course framework, and we need many more hours to provide the necessary feedback for this course. Based on our review, a major concern is that a large percentage of the curriculum is not developmentally appropriate for incoming 9th graders. The following required sources that are just based off of Unit 1 that we reviewed were placed in a text analyzer to determine readability. This reading ability analysis is based on seven readability formulas, and they rate the text as the following. Washington's Letter to the Hebrew Congregation. Grade level: 17 out of 22. Reading level: Difficult to read. Reading age: Quote, college graduate. From Jefferson, the resource from Jefferson, I'm in a circus, from John Adams to the Massachusetts militia. Grade level: 18 out of 22. Reading level: Very difficult to read. Their highest rating. Reading age: Quote, college graduate. Board policy states that, quote, "Courses adopted will be age-appropriate," I'm sorry, "age-development-appropriate and meet the needs of the students." These two primary sources are just a small sample of what the Hillsdale curriculum requires us to do. Based on the level of our incoming 9th grade students, these college graduate-level resources should not be listed as required unless there are other supplemental texts provided to better support the literacy needs of our students. There are several problems with the big ideas, essential questions, and content statements in their current form. Some are historically inaccurate, some are missing critical information. Typically rewrite essential questions and big ideas using student-friendly language, and they are usually not focused on specific content. Board policy 105 also states that, as the educational leader of the district, the superintendent shall be responsible to the board for the development of the curriculum. She or he shall establish procedures for curriculum development, which ensures the utilization of available resources and effective participation of administrators and teaching staff members. We ask the board that they follow Board Policy 105 moving forward and don't intentionally exclude teachers from curriculum development. We would like to finish by making the following demands. Please place teachers back in their role of developing curriculum. We've demonstrated that our knowledge and expertise is beneficial to process in helping our students achieve academic excellence. Please allow the appropriate time to develop the new 9th grade course. Let us be clear, we are not in favor of implementing this proposed curriculum for the 23, 24 school year. We have not been given any time to review and adjust the curriculum. In the best interest of our students, we ask that we keep the already board-approved 9th grade early American history course until we have enough time to fully develop this curriculum. Thank you.
And then Ms. Johnson, would you like to?
Since I was reading something that was beginning with Missy, I am going to step aside and let her just read. I wanna go back to two years ago in August when the school board made a sharp left with a curriculum that was being worked on by our, with our teachers and supervisors in conjunction with two doctorate-level women who have had so much experience, and they were associated with, as Amy had said, the Association of Supervision, or for Supervision in Curriculum Development. This organization has been around for 80 years, 80 years. I would encourage you to look up Dr., hold on a second, I think Heidi Hayes-Jacob and Dr. Ben Akallik. Our faculty with master's degrees were working on that curriculum for three years. I would encourage you to go back to the August 2nd, 2021 board meeting and watch it. Also, the August, it was the one towards the end of August, I believe it was August 23rd, 2021. It is so informative to watch where we were then. Heidi Hayes-Jacob and Dr. Ben Akallik were working with our school district on creating a culturally responsive curriculum. At that time, there was some community backlash about this being political. A community member stated that he had gotten over 100 signatures from people in the community that were in opposition to DEI and that curriculum. He stated that these 100 people had formed an organization called Penridge for Educational Liberty, that they felt they didn't have a voice, they didn't understand what was going on. I want you to compare that to what is happening now. What is happening now? 1,000-plus signatures against Vermillion. We have had Penridge stakeholders coming to this podium, week after week and meeting after meeting, parents, students, community members, teachers, administrators coming to this podium, and yet, two years ago, two years ago, watch the meeting. These people came up to the podium with not even close to the level of intelligent, articulate speaking ability. Watch it, I'm telling you. Not to mention that one of the men, and I know we can't say names, but go back and watch, one of the men quoted a study, and he was completely inaccurate. Hold on a second, okay. He claimed that culturally responsive teaching was a new initiative, because he was trying to build a case that this was political. It is not a new initiative, it's been around for 30 years. This community, or this community member quoted a study, and he said that this study that was called, it was from the School Psychology Review, that it basically stated that culturally responsive curriculum is not effective. He was wrong.
It is your time.
All you gotta do is watch, watch this board minutes.
I have missed one of the questions.
I watched so much of notes.
Amy Jankowicz.
Yep, you got it. Okay, apologize. Thank you.
She's also Mindy McCormick. Okay, just, she's 1st grade, I'm 5th grade.
Hi, I'm Amy Jankowicz, I work at West Rock Hill, 1st grade teacher. Absolutely love my job, I love where I work, I love my coworkers, and I have been part of the social studies committee for a year, year and a half, two years, I don't know how long it's been now. And who would've thought I would've said I looked forward to going? We're peeling through standards, they can get pretty boring, but when we had it on the calendar to go, I was looking forward to it. It felt like we were doing the right thing. We were peeling through every single one of the standards, took hours, we were categorizing them, colorizing them, putting them into different, kind of building units around it, and it took a really long time, but it felt like we were doing the right thing. Once we really dug through all of those things, it was then creating big ideas, essential questions, and then it fell into the content area. And it felt very Americana to us, we were very proud and we were excited, kind of to show you guys. We really put a lot of emphasis on, kind of trying to mix, you know, the teachers and the board. So we were proud of what we had, we tied all of what we were building to the key standards that we found appropriate, what was developmentally appropriate for our students, and focusing on what students can conceptually grasp at the age of 6 and 7. So if you said, hey, what happened last week, they don't know. Look into the future, they say, when is the 4th of July? And they say, oh, right after Christmas. So kind of time and conceptualizing those things is really hard, so I thought we were doing a really good job of making it developmentally appropriate while still meeting all the standards. Another thing that we were working on was collaborating horizontally throughout the different elementary schools. One thing that we've been working on is making sure we're all on the same page, all teaching the same thing. But another really cool thing that we were working on was aligning it vertically. So, hey, what can we kind of splash at our 6-year-olds now that they can conceptually grasp, but then how can we introduce that when they're now 10 years old, like, hey, I have a little bit of foundation, let's build off of that. So we are really proud of all of the work that we did with that. Jen, I have to applaud you, you were absolutely fantastic during the whole process. It was really cool being able to ask a question and have a really great kind of model for us throughout the whole time, leading us to what we were able to do. And again, it really felt like we were doing the right thing during the committee. I'm a little heartbroken over some of the changes. Again, we thought we had really presented like a really great product, so I'm a little surprised over some of the changes in regards to important people, again, who can we conceptualize, who are some famous faces that our 1st graders might have a little bit of a foundation on. So I was a little surprised by the implementation of John Smith being on that list when we used to have George Washington. So thinking again about what our students actually have background knowledge on, that surprise changed me a little bit in regards to the different holidays. I didn't see Veterans Day anymore, I didn't see Flag Day, I didn't see Constitution Day, Election Day, all replaced with just the First Thanksgiving, which was a shock to me because, again, the Americana theme that we were working on. If I could finish just for a second, nonetheless, if it is what it is, school is starting Monday. In 1st grade, we have 45 minutes of instructional time per social studies lesson. The first unit would be 1,350 minutes of instructional time, and all we have to go off of right now is the three-page paper that was presented tonight. I don't know how it's gonna come together, how we're gonna make the visuals, how can we make the assessments, how are we gonna collaborate between all the schools? I don't see how it's going to come together within a week, and I'm very concerned. So, thank you for listening, and here is history.
So I'm just gonna touch on some of the discussion about how prepared a teacher, and by the way, my name's Melinda McCormick, I teach 5th grade at West Rock Hill, how teachers are feeling about implementing this new curriculum this year. So my first glimpse at the three units was today, about 3:30 in the afternoon, and they're quite different from what I'm used to teaching in 5th grade, and I've been teaching for 31 years, and many of those years I've been in 5th grade. So I personally feel very unprepared to teach because several of these topics are brand-new to me. To be honest, I can feel a little panic setting in as well. Had I been given advance notice, I absolutely guarantee you, I would've spent many hours over the summer building my own background knowledge, because, you know, as teachers, we need to have that background knowledge, and we kind of need to be the experts in the topics. So I would've absolutely done that. Currently, for many of the topics that are on the list for 5th grade, I don't have any resources or visuals or assessments prepared for any of that, and I know once school starts, we hit the ground running, and, you know, there's no time to do any of those things that we need to do to make our presentations dynamic and high interest prior to this year. And I know that there was some discussion about if we didn't push this forward, and if, what would we do this year if we didn't push this forward? And prior to this year, I had built an amazing library of slideshows that had maps and visuals and wonderful things that create high-interest lessons, and that's what I would do, and I would share that with any teacher who was new to my grade level. But I'm really worried about what are my lessons gonna look like this year with the notice that we have? I won't have any resources that I created myself. Kids have questions, would I be able to answer those questions? Because I don't have the background knowledge on several of these topics. So I'm not above pleading with you not to push this elementary social studies curriculum through this year. Thank you.
I totally understand your concerns and all those wonderful lessons that you said that you spent on. Like, that was part when Miss Vitale said about, like, supplemental resources, still using that, like, that's not something that I would say, don't, like, I would encourage that, and I understand what you're saying of, like, feeling unprepared, needing that background knowledge. That's why I feel like you're absolutely allowed to use your, you know, as long as it gets approved by Miss Vitale, but...
Right, absolutely. The when is, I'm in panic because I don't know when I would be able to do that.
I mean, I feel like you could send it over, or even maybe hopefully this week too, I don't know, I just feel like you chip away as you're doing your units and your work month. And the core knowledge, I know, like, you guys haven't delved into it, but I feel like it does have a lot of things there that would be helpful resources, that it's not like you're coming up with something from scratch.
I just feel like it's a disadvantage right now to do it right now.
Thank you. Okay, so that is the end of public comment. Okay, all right.